Good evening, everyone. Please join me in the prayers. Dear God, today as this session opens, we pray that your presence will be before us and everyone who serves in the decision-making process of our city. We pray for directions which will lead to our city to be strong and unified. May we continue the legacy of our founders. May we be granted this day the wisdom to make decisions which will be for the good of our city. We also pray for your special blessings and all those who are working to transform our city and make it a better place to live and work. Amen. Please join me in allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Counselor Scott.
Here.
Counselor Yem.
Here.
Mayor Chow.
Here.
Counselor Drinkwater.
Here.
Counselor Gitchia.
Here.
Counselor Janess.
Here.
Counselor Leahy.
Here.
Counselor Mercier.
Here.
Counselor Noon.
Here.
Counselor Robinson.
Here.
Counselor Rourke.
Here.
Eleven present.
Do you have any memorials, some moments of silence? Counselor Noon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This moment of silence, back in chamber for James O'Brien. Our thought go to the survival of James O'Brien of Lowell, formerly of Sidewick. Died at eight, eighty-four. He grew up in Hampton, Connecticut, and then attended Boston College on a football scholarship. His football career with Detroit Lion and Buffalo Bill was cut short due to injury. Jim Mary Patty Carlson raised a family in Sidewick and started a clustering and diploma company in 1960. He has worked with many organizations, including the Irish Chamber of Commerce and the Olympic, Special Olympic. After retiring, Jim moved to Lowell with his partner Nikki Songus. And when the two spent time away from Lowell, it was usually either in Chap- in Chapton or in Ireland. Jim was loved by his family and by Nikki's children and their spout. He will be dearly missed by all. Second, Mr. Mayor, is for M. Roberta Galvin, known as Bobby. Was a beloved mother, grandmother, and great-grandmother who's at eight, ninety-four. Died surrounded by her loving family. She was the wife of the late James McDermott and later the late John Blake Jack Galvin Senior. Cherished by many, she will be missed by all who had the pleasure of knowing her. Born in Lowell on December eighteen, nineteen twenty-eight. She was a resident of the Highland Section of Lowell for most of her life. Bobby received her education in Lowell Public School and received her associate degree as an executive secretary from Catalin Dell Business School in Brookline. During her career, Bobby was employed by Lowell Public School in a variety of capacities. She spent her life deeply involved in the activity of her children, grandchildren, and great-grandchildren. Ms. Galvin is survived by her daughter, Roberta Keefe of Lowell, Susan Curtis- Susan Courtney and her husband Jack of Hampton, Mass. And her son, John Blake Galvin Junior and his wife Carrie of Lowell and her ten grandchildren and two great-grandchildren. She was predeceded by her two sister, Lorraine and Bird Marvin. May she rest in peace. Thank you.
Any other memorials? Moment of silence here now. Mr. Clerk, please dim the light for a moment of ducking chamber. I'd like to welcome everyone to the meeting tonight. The chamber is full. People here to watch the meeting. Both the downstairs and the gallery are full. And thank everyone at home for watching as well. We now will start with the meeting on the agenda. We'll start with the mayor's business. Two point one is the communication, remote Zoom participation. Motion to accept and place on file by Counselor Yem, second by Counselor Mercier. All in favor, motion is passed. The second part of the mayor's business, this is one of my favorite things to do as we recognize exceptional individual in our community that do things above and beyond their selfless act to help other people. And this individual is quite, quite amazing. And as you look around, you see that there are more people here tonight than at the Polar Plunge this, this winter. And I would like to present this citation, and it is a key to the city for this individual. I want to thank Counselor John Leahy and the McMahon family and all the counselors for helping us prepare this citation tonight. So if you would indulge us, Mr. Keefe, if you would, please come to the podium. So I might be able to read this citation, even though it's long, but it's not enough for us to say all the great things he has done for the community. Just leave the podium. I'm gonna get the short, the short version here, Ray. Official citation, be hereby known to all that the seat of Lowell in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts hereby offers its sincerest congratulations to Ray Keefe. Born and raised in Lowell, Ray always gave back to the community. In 2009, Ray and his nine-year-old daughter plunged into the city, the icy cold water in Seabrook, New Hampshire, in honor of a sixteen-year-old high school boy, Mark Frattonrolli, who was in a fatal car accident. Ray named his Polar Plunge after the Fratton- the Frattonrolli family. A few years later, the plunge became the Keefe Family Polar Plunge. Ray and his family created this as a fundraiser that grows bigger and better every year. Ray has been considered an angel on earth. Each year, hundreds of people join when Ray announces the king or queen of Seabrook for a day. Each year, Ray tries to make sure he chooses a recipient from Lowell and brings Lowell to Seabrook Beach. He knows the people of this great city never disappoint and always comes together for their community. Over the years, the Keefe Family Polar Plunge has raised over two hundred thousand for people in need. Some of the people that Ray and his family have helped throughout the year are: 2009, the inaugural plunge for Mark Frattonrolli, who at sixteen years old was in a fatal car accident. 2011, Cooper Doucette, who was paralyzed his sophomore year of high school from a football injury. 2015, Ellie Tuxera, age twenty-one, who was in a car accident with her newborn baby, which left her paralyzed. 2018, Sandy DePelito, who had her leg amputated due to a flesh-eating disease. 2021, Sandra Dubuque Grimes, who is battling the effects of multiple sclerosis. 2022, Sean Mulligan, who is battling MOSA, MRSA, and invasive blood infection. 2023, Eddie McMahon Junior, a high school student battling brain cancer. Ray has created an amazing charity event from which everyone benefits. Ray will never take credit for all he does. A very humble man who will always give the credit to others. Over the years, Ray has brought hope, compassion, and generosity to many families. He reminds us how contagious kindness and compassion really is. Ray has a way of bringing sunshine into someone's darkest days and celebrate every recipient. Each person he has helped over the years has become his friend and their families have become like family to him. Ray reminds us that amazing people do exist and that not all superheroes wear capes. Now therefore, I, Master Curry Chow, on behalf of the entire City Council, am proudly presenting this to you, the key to the city, signed by myself and entire City Council. Thank you, Ray. Before I have Mr. Keefe say a few words, I would like to ask Counselor Leahy if you would like to say a few words. Counselor Leahy?
Sure, I'm, I'm, I'll keep it short. You gave the short version, but we just wanted to say thank you, Ray. There's a lot of people here to support you tonight, and the city of Lowell supports you. And thank you for everything you do. Thank you.
Thank you, Johnny. Thank you, everybody. I love this city, and we'll be doing this for as long as we can. I don't do it for, for this type of thing, because this is why. I can't handle it. But I, I love this city and, um, yeah, I just, I just love giving back and, you know, and be able to meet young Eddie this year. It's just been fabulous. And Vicki and Eddie and their whole family, just unbelievable family. And the committee that we have is just unreal. And so it's really, it's really nice to give back to the city of Lowell. It's, it's been great to me, and I really appreciate tonight. Thank you.
Need a motion to accept and place on file the key to the city by Counselor Leahy, second by Counselor Janess. All in favor, see eye, post a note, eyes have it. Motion is carried. We now go to section three on the agenda, which is the city clerk. Three point one, minutes of housing subcommittee with joint zoning subcommittee. March twenty-first, for acceptance. Motion to accept and place on file by Counselor Drinkwater, second by Counselor Noon, on favor, see eye. The motion is passed.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Mercier.
Before we get into the full agenda, I'd like to ask for suspension of the rules. First, for six point three, which is the vote to authorize the payment. The person that is involved with this has a very serious situation where her mother is in the hospital and she wants to be there with her. So if I could suspend the rules to let her speak and get this out of the way.
Motion by Counselor Mercier to suspend the rule, take item six point three out of order, second by Counselor Noon. Six point three is the vote authorized payment of bills incurred in excess of appropriation of school, waifu reading, and a second reading by title. Seat of Lowell in City Council vote to approve the payment of unpaid invoices from prior fiscal years for the school department. Any comments or questions by any of the members? Counselor Gitchia?
Thank you, Mayor Chow. Through you to the school department representative. There's twenty-five invoices that haven't been paid or in bad bills. What is the reason that this is happening? Can you explain some of that?
Can you hear me?
Thank you, Ms. Turner. Good to see you in the council meeting today.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you. Yes, actually, the reasons vary. But each time we encounter a problem, we adapt to the problem. We adapt to the situation and we find solutions. It's like being in a batting cage. You're trying to hit the balls. You worry about why it's malfunctioning later. So we adapt to the problem, we fix it, but then we get a new problem. So this current year, what we've had is legal obstacles. Sometimes we're legally obligated to transport homeless students. And then even though we don't have the contract in place yet, so then we end up having something called a bad bill because we have a bill without a contract. So that's inevitable. The other issue that we're facing right now is that we did have some purchase orders that were closed before the invoices came in. So you don't pay something without a purchase order. But the services did indeed happen. We do have the funding. So this situation with coming before the City Council is really a procedural thing that we have to do in order to be transparent and show things. But we are not asking for additional funds. We still do have the funds available to pay the bills that are in front of you.
I don't think the point is whether the funds are there or not. It's about the policies in place. And, and a lot of these bills you look at, they're sent to different locations. They're not really sent to one location. So it really makes it hard to watch. But if you look at that CAVT Solutions one, to me, it looks like a fraudulent invoice. It looks like a statement to me, more than an invoice, because it doesn't say anything. And you have multiple ones, a lot of money. And if this invoice was valid in the way it's written, it would be payable within this fiscal year. Because it says ten, I have to put on my glasses so I can see, ten-four of twenty-twenty-two, which is fiscal year twenty-three, which we're in. So these are more statements than they are invoices. And if it's an invoice that's dated at this point in, because on it, it doesn't say when any of the services are rendered. It just gives you a date of this fiscal year. It could have been paid in this year. But obviously, you picked up on these services were provided prior to this fiscal year. And this invoice is more of a statement than it is anything. Because it should tell you on this invoice when the services were rendered, how long it's past due. None of that's on here. So I can't support even voting on these things because to me, this doesn't even look like anything that is valid to even pay because it's not really a true invoice. It doesn't state any of the things that can actually be paid. I, I don't know who does their accounting, but it seems like they were trying to pass it by people to get this paid. And obviously, your department picked up on it and said, whoa, wait a minute. These services were rendered in a different fiscal year. We need to include these in bad bills. But we, on the invoice, it doesn't even state when. These could have been done in nineteen ninety-nine. We don't know. Because it just says invoice and it states a date. So there's not a date of service. And many of them don't have dates of when the services were rendered. And, and like you said, some of them had purchase orders and they were closed early. Does your department authorize closing of purchase orders?
So, to your first point, I agree that sometimes we do get invoices that are more like statement-type invoices. We just have to accept them when they've done the work. So we do have Ricky Underwood that can confirm that the work was done. The purchase order was entered in July of two thousand twenty-one. But because of supply chain shortages and other delays, the work was done in June, which would have made it a bad bill. Well, I shouldn't say bad bill. I should say delayed bill because you shouldn't pay for it in the following year. But on top of that, they had things arrive after the year closed. So they had work done prior to June thirtieth and after June thirtieth. As far as the, the formality of the invoice, I agree with you. I, I do have my problems with those type of invoices, too. And as far as the second question, no, we actually try to work with the current auditor. Whenever there's a current auditor, we adjust because they, their level of scrutiny does vary. So in this particular case, when the, the purchase orders were closed, it was based upon the current auditor's need to close the books. So we don't have to sign off on it. They can close the purchase order without us. But I'm sure that they try to work with us and give us an opportunity to say whether we want something to close. But in this particular case, these were closed without, without me being there. But I would have said to close them if we had to in that I thought the work was complete.
I would never pay a bill that says, "See contract." They have to write down when they actually show up to a place so that you can verify everything. And then you call the maintenance department and say, was this work done on this day? Through you, Mr. Mayor, to the auditor. If, I guess my question is, a lot of these, some of them are subscriptions. So it's a subscription for books. And you look and it says, okay, close, you know, you have the subscription from June first to June thirtieth. So the purchase order is in place to pay the year worth of the subscription. Why would we be closing anything prior to July first unless it was verified with the school department and they say, okay, it's okay to close this? Have we done that without even going back to them? Or is there a mechanism in Munist that would say, okay, to close?
Madam Auditor?
Thank you. Yes, so there is a process. It's a process that's been used for, you know, for years. As we approach the end of the fiscal year, a memo goes out from the auditor's office to all of the departments with lists of their open POs, requesting the department to review the list of open POs to, you know, determine which ones need to be kept, kept open and carried forward into the next fiscal year. So that, I mean, that is a process that's been done through, you know, for all the auditors. I haven't changed that. Like specifically for the CATV, that was closed at, at, at the auditor's request. It was for installation of audiovisual systems in three different schools. It was a purchase order that was issued in fiscal year twenty-one. And so the, you know, the funds carried forward into twenty-two because the services hadn't been rendered because of supply chain. So when I, you know, do my year-end process, I did not get a request from the school to, to keep this one open. It was included on the list, but it, it may have been a miscommunication. But when I reviewed the proposal, it does, you know, it talks about, because like you said, it was, it's a large, it's a large project. There's, there was a deposit that was due. There would have been progress billings throughout the, you know, the course of, of the work that was done. And none of that had, you know, occurred during two thousand twenty-two. So that's where I made the determination that the purchase order should be closed because the funds had been carrying forward since two thousand twenty-one. And in the event that school could have opened up a new purchase order using, you know, the current year appropriations.
Was the purchase order closed after June thirtieth?
Yes, it was closed. Yeah, it was closed after June thirtieth. It was, you know, prior to my closing of the books, which was in August of August.
So when did you find out that there's a bill out there outstanding? If something isn't done by June thirtieth and you call over to the school department and they say, you know, we didn't get the service done, then the PO would be closed and then opened in the following year if the services are there. But if it's the following year, the services, then there's a purchase order just reopened. It's not a bad bill. So this work had to be done in a year where we either didn't get the invoice on time and paid or somebody just dropped the ball. My problem is when you look at these bills, it doesn't state any dates when work is completed. It's just, and it's really a statement more than an invoice to me. And I wouldn't, I'm not gonna vote tonight for it. I would send it back to the school department to come back with actual bills that say when the service was done and how it was paid. And I know it's, it's just nitpicking, but at the end of the day, these are mechanisms that should be in place and they should not sit here. You read through some of the memos and it says, you know, somebody ordered something and, you know, we didn't know about it. Well, that's not normally the way, and I understand it happens, but it's not normally done where it carries into a bad bill. And, and, and these things look like someone was trying to be paid for something in a fiscal year, but it was caught by the school department or the auditor. I'm not sure who caught this. But they caught this and said, we're not gonna do something dishonest. Because it does say on the invoice, ten-four of twenty-twenty-two. It's an invoice. And it doesn't say any dates on it. So if the school department just was willing to pay this, it could have simply been paid off and no one would even look into this. No one would audit the books like this. So I do credit the school department for catching these things. But when you're looking at closing a purchase order, this makes absolutely no sense. When, and, and I think some of these have to go back and say, can we get dates of service on these in actual real invoice and not statements? And, and I'll just leave it at that.
Any other comments, questions by any counselors? Counselor Leahy?
Thank you. I just, I don't mind paying these. I mean, you're gonna pay them anyways. But Counselor Gitchia makes a point, like Bay State seating. It says per day rate, and then it says three or four days. So, I mean, what did you pay for? Did you pay for three days or four days? Wouldn't you wanna know that? You're just paying the bill. I think you just need to tighten up on these and they need to go to a central position or something. But it's, you know, it's your money. You guys are gonna take care of them. We just need to, you know, approve them. But it, it just, some of these seem very sloppy. And if we were a homeowner paying for these, we'd ask. Are we paying for three days or four days?
Any other comments, question? Counselor Robinson?
Thank you. I agree. If you're balancing your own budget, if you had charges show up, you'd at least have some information as to what that charge is. Can I ask, would it be too much to delay this for a week so you could come? Can I ask, would it be too much to delay this for a week so you could come back with some specifics?
Not at all. As a matter of fact, just so you know, I could be in full agreement with the quality of an invoice, but it's my duty to bring it forward, to be transparent. And it's my duty to bring it forward so that if you do get a lawsuit from a vendor, an unhappy vendor, that it wasn't because I wasn't paying. It's because I bring it forward to you to give you the opportunity to know, these are the bills we're receiving. If you choose to pay it, it's your choice as a body. If not, if we do get a lawsuit, it's, you know that I did my end.
I mean, would you be able to?
Absolutely.
Get a list of what specific information on these invoices?
Yes, and those particular instances that were identified, I can bring it forward to the vendor and ask for more specifics in a more suitable format.
Thank you.
Councilor Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just so we can clarify, I would be under the, I would agree that these are very, you know, sloppy, messy invoices, statements, whatever you want to call them. I was under the assumption though, that you had already vetted these and gone back and checked the contracts and made sure that they were all valid invoices. Would that be correct?
Yes, I vetted them. That does not mean I can improve the quality of the invoice they're submitting, right? But I did vet the work was done. That's why, the work was delayed for a year because of all the, you know, delays with supply arriving. So I did confirm with Ricky Underwood, that's how I confirm. I don't go out and check the actual installation, but I talked to Ricky Underwood, who did sign off on it. As a matter of fact, I spoke to him again today to get an update on it. And he said that because of all the delays, a lot of things were done piecemeal, but that even some work was done before June 30th and other work was done after the fact, including up until October. So that's why some of the invoice dates are showing that. Like final installations, if they did the majority of the work and there was one missing piece on backorder, they would do, install that in October.
Okay, so I would just agree with Council Robinson, I guess as far as bringing it back, having some clarification, more details on what these are all for. Thank you.
Councilor Rook?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, this is almost the exact same conversation we had as a body, you know, a couple of years ago in the last council. But the bottom line is that we're going to have to approve this to pay it or else we'll end up in court and the monetary amounts will be much larger than they are now. You know, hopefully the vendor signs, you know, under the pains and penalties that, you know, this is what the bill is. You know, I'm okay with sending out for a week to, you know, for more detail if Mr. Trump can provide that. But the bottom line is that, you know, we're going to end up approving this, approving this because if we don't, it's a lawsuit against the city. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Gitchi?
I do agree with the rest of the council and also the speaker. I think the transparency piece is more important than the process itself. If you look at one of them, you look at CWG, it says invoice date 4/24/21. It says due date 5/24/21. That's two years ago. And it was sent to the Central Administration Office, 155 Merrimack Street, Floor 4. I don't know how we wait two years. And I don't know how this company doesn't send back and say, well, you got an old bill. You know, you got to pay it. And it's $2,600. So I don't know what company doesn't have a payroll system where they're going to call back and say this. To me, if Ricky Underwood or anybody remembers this bill, they're better than I am from two years. I mean, and that's the problem when you look at this stuff. There's no need in government to go back two years. And then the other one is the Brooks Publishing one. It says invoice date 5/1/21. The shipping date is 8/1/21. How are they invoicing you for something they didn't ship? So these are things that, when you look at these bills and somebody comes back and says, okay, can I see these bills? That's the problem. And I agree with you. I'm not, I'm not saying it's you. I'm saying that this is, to me, most vendors would never be paid for this because of the amount of time they waited. No matter who they get for a lawyer, what they do, when you wait this long, it's not payable, but...
Councilor Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I share the frustration of the council. I know that past year, I think things now is much more improved than it was before. But, you know, it is responsibility of the school CFO to bring this forward before the council or before, for approval, and she had done that. And a lot of the services already been provided by the providers, either, you know, Crest Collaboration that transfer, you know, homeless students to and from their place and as well as the CAVT solution. All these services being provided, already done. So it is our responsibility to pay those service providers. But I'm fine with, you know, to return in, to the next meeting for the specific of invoice from this provider, you know, adding a couple more sentence as to what service they provide. I'm sure it's not that difficult for them to do so. So, thank you.
Need a motion to come to next week by Councilor Gitchi, second by Councilor Leahy on favor of the House. No, the House have it. Motion is carry.
Mr. Mayor, while we on the suspension...
Councilor Yam, I note a few motions here that are going to be taken out of orders. I will allow that, but we're reaching seven o'clock. Let's take the public hearing first because only a couple of minutes. And then we'll go to all the motions that have registered speaker here. But before I continue, I just want to recognize, acknowledge former Mayor Wilson Maris, who's here in the council as well. Welcome back, Mayor. Item four on the agenda is general public hearing. The 4.1 is the ordinance on zoning on marijuana. This section is now open to all those in favor. Do we have anybody who speaks in favor? Mr. Clerk? All those in, all those in favor? Here none. This portion is now closed. We're now open to all those who oppose. This portion is open to all those who oppose. Here none. That portion is closed. Do we have any comments or questions by any of the council member? Move to approve. Move to approve by Councilor Rook and by Councilor Noon. And this will also be taken up on item 5.2 and the planning board recommendation as well. Mr. Clerk, roll call please.
Councilor Scott?
Yes.
Councilor Yam?
Yes.
Mayor Chow?
Yes.
Councilor Drinkwater?
Yes.
Councilor Gitchi?
Yes.
Councilor Janess?
Yes.
Councilor Leahy?
Yes.
Councilor Mercia?
Yes.
Councilor Noon?
Yes.
Councilor Robinson?
Yes.
Councilor Rook?
Yes.
That's 11 yeses.
Councilor Yam?
If I may, Mr. Mayor, move the motion number 9.11. We have three registered speaker. May I make...
Motion by Councilor Yam to take item 9.11 out of order, second by Councilor Robinson. Motion 9.11 is a motion by Councilor Yam to request city manager have proper department look into traffic calming measure around the Hellenic American Academy, including but not limited to painting the word "slow school crossing." Second by Councilor Noon. Mr. Clerk, please call the registered speaker, please.
Jason Hanceus?
Good evening. I think we've got a dangerous school crossing here and it's an elementary school. We've got a lot of young kids. We've got a lot of distracted drivers. And I think the issue we're having is being caused by the fact that there's no buildings on the opposite side from the school, besides from Macheris, which is pushed back. So as you approach from either side, you're opened up to this very wide vista-type view with the buildings framing it way in the distance. And it's just human nature that people look up and they speed up as they come into this kind of situation. So we wanted to come down and ask for that strip to be engineered, the crossing to be engineered, but more importantly, for it to be lined with trees to take this huge view away and get people to focus back on the road and slow down a little bit. I don't know if it's physically possible for the curbs to be moved closer together, but some kind of a strip or bump outs or some kind of engineered crossing there, I think, would make it a lot safer, you know, in the dumber street intersection as well. It has a really, really soft curb and people roll through there constantly. We've got a lot of kids there. We don't have a crossing guard. We're a private school. So the situation has gotten dire. I think it's, we should have probably been here a long time ago. And now, you know, we're here asking for help to try to make this safer.
Anastasia Kazanas?
Hi, I'm a mom. I have three students at the Hellenic. We do our best to pay attention to the cars around us when we're crossing the street, but oftentimes we see the grandparents hesitant. Some of us parents have actually pulled out to block traffic and allow for those to cross. So even if it's a flashing light, maybe even police presence, whatever you guys think is doable, you know, in the morning time during drop off and in the afternoon for pickup, just to, so everybody feels safer and that the kids, you know, they're naturally kids have a tendency to want to run out or, and everybody's on high alert constantly because of the traffic. Just last week, we had an incident where someone just sped up and it was actually my husband who had to slam on his brakes and my son hit his mouth on his water bottle and was bleeding. So, you know, it's been an issue, but this has obviously now become something a little more personal. It's a school zone and so we want people to know that there are children there and they need to be safe. Thank you.
Mary Frances Tindall?
I'm the principal of the Hellenic American Academy. So thank you, first of all, for letting us speak tonight. I'm really just going to echo the same things that Jason and Anastasia said. We're just, as the principal, it's my concern that we're keeping everybody safe and everybody's getting to and from school safe. And it is a very busy road. It's very fast. We do have flashing lights, but they're on Warden Street, which really doesn't help us much. So even if we could get some crossing lights on Broadway Street, and as Jason said, something that we could do to the structure of the sidewalks and the road to maybe make it, make the people have to slow down. So that's, we're just concerned about the speeding on the street and making sure we're keeping all the kids' parents, grandparents safe as the kids are coming in and out of school. Thank you.
Any other speaker? Mr. Clerk?
That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Yam?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thanks for the speaker who came out to express their concern. I received a phone call. And this is the same street and make it more even danger because the Canal Street is open, so people cut through from Appleton Street, Jackson Street, cut through the old, the new courthouse and Canal Street. And they tried to beat the traffic light by speeding across the Dutton Street onto Broadway where the school is located. We would like to see something being done before somebody got hurt. And the same issue all the way down to Suffolk Street where the corner where the traffic. Because after the Hellenic school, the road kind of curved, so when they go so fast, they lost control, hit the bridge on the right, and then a few times they hit the building on the left at the corner of Broadway and Suffolk Street. And we had residents who lived in that building that came and expressed their concern and urged the city to do something about that. So this is another situation that the school would like to have the city address and I urge the city to take appropriate step right away, if possible, to eliminate any future accident that, you know, could happen. So I appreciate all the time that you come out. So if I were to say it myself, it's not as powerful, but we have you who express, you know, who you're there every day when the kids got drop off and picked up. And I do see that traffic is really, really bad. So thank you, Mr. Mary. Thank you for all of you to come out. Have a good evening, sir.
Councilor Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Earlier today, Chairman Rook and among the committee, Chairman Rook was a transportation chair. And Councilor Janess and Councilor Mercia was there as well. Our city traffic engineer has proposed a number of great idea, one of which is to install a temporary speed home. And also the other is reducing lane width. So this has come about, this is the right timing for it. So the proposed number of street calmness was proposed by a city traffic engineer. So, you know, this is a great idea to maybe, Mr. Chairman, to add one of this as a start, a four-week temporary street calmness. So I would ask the managers to work with the city engineer to start that process. Thank you.
Councilor Rook?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, following up on Councilor Noon, we do have the subcommittee this evening. There's multiple different types of trial treatments that can be used over there. I have spoken to our transportation engineer and she will speak with some of the speakers from the school as soon as this is complete. But there does seem to be a couple of different things we could do to help calm some traffic that's out there and make it safer. So I did provide the report and the representatives from the school and I'm sure we'll be speaking to Ms. Altman shortly. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Gitchi?
Thank you, Mayor Chow. It makes a lot of sense. When you look at this area, you could probably create bump outs where they would have now drop off areas, contain drop off areas. Because when you go around that corner, you can't see much and that line of sight is so clear that it almost becomes a speedway to the corner and then now you have children and you're not just talking any, it's an elementary school. So I think that, you know, define drop off areas protected by bump outs makes a lot of sense and then crossing that area. So this is a very good motion and I thank Council Yam for putting it forward.
Any other comments? Council Robinson?
Thank you. I'd just like to echo what my colleague said about the Safe Streets program. I think this is another perfect example of the community coming out, requesting and identifying a location that could be a potential trouble spot. And I'm confident that our traffic engineer and the administration will come up with something. So kids and elderly, you know, any protections we can come up with greatly support. Thank you.
Council Mercia?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It is a very high-trafficked area with young students, a very congested area, but it's tough crossing that street as anyone can tell you that. The speaker spoke very eloquently about their concern and we do have the traffic engineer here this evening. I'm certainly sure she heard all this and I'm sure that something can be done to alleviate the worry that parents have crossing that street for the safety of their children. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Maybe the city engineer would like to say something?
No. Councilor Yam, would you like to, or you want to wait till the motion response come back? I think Council Yam, I thank you for the suggestions. I think she heard everything, all the comments from the members. And I would just ask through the manager that when you do the traffic study, please also work with the school administration because they know the area best, they have seen it more often, the situation more than any others. Mr. Manager, did you raise your hand to make comment or you're okay? No other comments or questions? Council Mercia?
Yeah, are we all done this particular subject right here?
No, I'm going to do a voice word real quick on favor of the House. No, the House have it. Motion is carry. Congratulations. Thank you everyone for coming to speak. Councilor Janess?
Thank you, Mayor Chow. While we're under the suspension of the rules, I'd like to add 5.1D to the items to take out of order because I believe we have a registered speaker for that. And if any of my other colleagues have other items, maybe we can just list them all now.
Yeah, we did have 6.6.
6.5.
6.6, I thought it...
So there was 5.1 by Councilor Janess and Councilor Mercia, which, which item?
6.5.
6.5. Any other items that need to be taken out of order? Okay, so motion by Councilor Janess and by Councilor Mercia to take item 5.1 and 6.5 out of order. I'm going to read both of them now, but we can take each one separately because we have speakers, registered speaker on each one.
Mr. Mayor, it's just 5.1D, not the whole thing.
Okay, 5.1D for the record. Okay, 5.1D. This is the communication with city manager on the motion response. The alphabet D is on Canal Place 3. Mr. Clerk, please call the registered speaker.
Speaker via Zoom, Dan Monroe.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Councilor Janess, for raising this important issue. So for those of you who are not aware, this is about the boundary shared by the visitor center parking lot, the Canal Place 3 parking lot, the NPS sidewalk, that National Park Center brick sidewalk, and the 246.1 Market Street property. So this spot has had a wooden fence along it for many years. So if you're in the old visitor center lot, you can see that wooden fence. This is that spot we're talking about. It is an offense, it was a road that connected the Canal Place 3 parking lot from Broadway. So you could continue straight on Broadway, you'd drive into the visitor center lot around it, into Canal Place 3 lot, the back of Market Mills, then through to Canal Place 1, 2, and eventually to get to Market Street. And it was a very popular cut through. I mean, it was a road, it was fine. Crucially though, this road was used by the fire department to access Canal Place 3 and the back of Market Mills and 246.1 Market Street. Fire trucks get stuck when they come in on the Market Street side. So maintaining access for fire trucks there is critical. We can't just block it off now like it was before because fire trucks can't get in. And so when the HCD garage was built, the road went away and the boundary obviously now became a spot where vehicles needed to cross. I don't know why the garage was situated where it is or why the boundary got smaller, but right now there's not enough room for a fence and a sidewalk. So there's no traffic control, there's no nothing. And to make things worse, Google Maps and Apple Maps will regularly update to show that this is actually a way to drive to the Hamilton and Canal Garage. If you look right now on Google Maps, you'll see there's a road there. We have folks in Canal Place 3 and another building downtown who repeatedly request it gets taken down. Inevitably, someone puts it back up. And all of this means that we have a sidewalk right next to a parking lot that, and when you're a pedestrian, when you look at it, you don't expect cars to drive from the road over the sidewalk into the parking lot or vice versa. It's not really marked that you can do that, but GPS is telling people they can. And we've seen residents of all of the buildings in that area, work vehicles for all kinds of organizations, National Park vehicles, even some local police vehicles drive over that boundary, they drive over regularly and it creates a dangerous situation. I saw the response to the motion. I don't know what can be done. There's not a lot of space there. But I just wanted to support Wayne and say that this really is a dangerous spot. I've heard a lot of folks in those buildings downtown say that they feel unsafe in that area. It seems like there could be a good solution. It's possible that the part of the boundary that where the National Park is might be a little bit straighter and easier for fire trucks. But I just wanted to join and share some thoughts, describe what the issue is and support the fact that it is a dangerous intersection. And there's a lot of cars that go through it from many, many places. Thank you.
Mr. Clerk, any other registered speaker?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the city manager, I appreciate the response, appreciate the idea of signage. I think that would be helpful. I spoke with the traffic engineer earlier and the issue is not only with the mountable curb area that is in the photo in the motion response, but also a little further towards the 246 Market Street building. There's a flagpole that comes up out of the brick sidewalk. What I've seen on many occasions is cars will actually drive up on that brick sidewalk beyond the flagpole and then hook back and come around into the Canal Place 3 lot. I have a neighbor who was eight months pregnant and almost got hit by a car doing this because nobody expects a car to just drive up on the sidewalk like that. The way it's situated, I think we can resolve that particular issue with either moving one of the four planters that's just on the other side, maybe putting a tree in or a bollard, something like that, just to make people realize they shouldn't be driving that way. I mean, I think people realize that anyway, but to make it physically impossible for them to drive that way. It won't impede the fire department's access because they're coming up over that multiple curb. They are not going around the flagpole. So if we could look at that and figure out a way to make this safer for all the users of the area, I think that would be a good thing for everybody. Thank you.
By anyone else? Councilor, not on this one, Councilor Kishya?
In the picture that, through you, Mr. Mayor, to the manager, in the picture that Councilor Janess has, it looks like somebody put two sections of temporary fence because they must have been coming that way. So if we can look at that temporary fence and try to make something more permanent over there and also make it so the distance between the post and the new fence or removal of the temporary fence, there's a planter or planting or something to that point, I think it would do its purpose. But somebody put a temporary fence in that area. It looks like two sections of temporary fence up. So somebody obviously knew there was an issue over there. Maybe now it's on your plate, Mr. Manager.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, through to the council. We will take another look at this to find out why people are jumping a sidewalk, but we will try to get to the bottom of it. But we thank you very much for that and obviously the safety of people walking in that area is of most importance. So we will take a look at this, Councilor Janess, to ensure that that's not happening, provided it doesn't interfere, obviously, with our public safety vehicles, which I know you want to make sure that that doesn't happen as well.
Absolutely. I appreciate that very much. And the one last thing I'll note is if someone could please make a phone call to our friends at the National Park because on more than one occasion, I've seen it and others have reported to me as well that the National Park maintenance trucks will use that as a shortcut and that's not emergency access. So if we could ask them to please stick to the actual city roads, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
I'd ask Assistant City Manager Machado to make that call tomorrow. Absolutely, that'll be done.
No other comments on this one?
Okay.
The Councilor Mousia, I just want to have clarification. Was it item 6.5 or 6.1? 6.5 was the one you want to take it out of order, right? Okay. Item 6.5 is a vote to declare 25 Liberty Street surplus and convey to Red Noy, Wayfu reading and second reading by title. City of Lowell and the city council vote declaring surplus the property located at 25 Liberty Street, Lowell, Massachusetts, and authorizing the city manager to convey said property to Red Noy and to execute all documents necessary for the transfer of the property. Any comments or questions by any member? Councilor Yen?
I just want to make the, accept the, make the motion to accept. But I want to say, because I know the family, they've been using the lot for many years and they have children who plays on that lot and they, summertime, they plant vegetables and all of that. And this is perfect, you know, perfect situation to support the family to acquire this lot. And I'm in full support of this motion.
Any comments? Councilor Mousia?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the city manager. When I ever saw this agenda and I saw all the yard sale programs to get it back on the tax roll and I was thrilled. This is what it's all about. Rather than have this property vacant, the people that are before us today for this, they're going to give some money to the city to take, well, for all these years, they've been taking care of the property. They're going to use it to plant vegetables. They're not going to build anything on it, but it's going to be added to their, rest of their property. This is what it's all about. Get it? Show life into the property and there's quite a few of them and I'm very, very happy to see that. People are utilizing this property. I'm so proud of this family for coming forward and wanting to make something with it and they deserve it after, you know, taking care of it all these years. So it did my heart good to see this agenda. Thank you so much.
Councilor Nguyen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for taking it up right now. This matters. And I want to thank both Councilor Yen and Councilor Mousia. Both is correct. You know, we all spoke to Mr. Noy and his families. They've been taking care of this property for a long while. And so the deed, when we transfer the deed from the city to Mr. Noy, the deed restriction is not forbidding an addition or anything like that. It's just so that they can take care of, continue to take care of it. And as Councilor Mousia said, you know, plant vegetable, whatever they need to do. But more important than that as well is the, it's going to the tax roll. So now they're going to pay a little more taxes and that property will become there. So it's a great, it's a great vote to support this, so thank you.
No other comments? Their motion to adopt by Councilor, does the registered speaker on this one? Or Mr. Clerk?
Doug Sears.
Doug.
Jesus.
Attorney Doug Sears and Resth Noy and Kurt and Ron Dina. And they have, they are very proud and just can't be thankful enough to the city of Lowell for all of these reasons that Councilor Mousia and everyone else has expressed. They've been over 20 years of growing their long beans and growing all these wonderful things there and they've been taking care of it and now that we can officially have this as their property to take care of, we're just very thankful.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Yeah. Yeah, I'm being taken care and will do continue taking care. And the best of all is I want city to like put a tax. Like we could have paid tax, if you keep that, if you don't pay, if you don't pay, I don't pay tax, then it's not good for the city. If the city can get back to me, then I pay tax, it's good for us, for all of us.
Thank you.
All right. No other comment in motion to adopt by Councilor Mousia, second by Councilor Nguyen. Mr. Clerk, roll call please.
Councilor Scott?
Yes.
Councilor Yen?
Yes.
Mayor Chow?
Yes.
Councilor Drinkwater?
Yes.
Councilor Gitchia?
Yes.
Councilor Janess?
Yes.
Councilor Leahy?
Yes.
Councilor Mousia?
Yes.
Councilor Nguyen?
Yes.
Councilor Robinson?
Yes.
Councilor Rook?
Yes.
That's 11 years.
Just a quick comment, Mr. Mayor.
Congratulations to Red Noy and family. Councilor Yen, anything else?
But all Kuncharan, in the summer, we would love to have some string bean, you know. It's a token, right?
As long as it's under $50.
Councilor will now go to the next item. Councilor Robinson?
Can we take motion, I mean the vote, 6.1 out of order, please?
Taking a motion by Councilor Robinson, second by Councilor Mousia to take item 6.1 out of order. 6.1 is a vote from the city manager and 6.1 is the vote to accept the gift of Black Joy sculpture from Kamel Peters and DIY Lowell. Mr. Clerk, I believe I would like to speak on this one. Okay, I'll just read this first. City of Lowell and the city council vote authorizing the city manager on behalf of the city of Lowell to accept a gift from artist Kamel Peters and Do It Yourself Lowell of a sculpture entitled Black Joy to be displayed in a small park on the corner of Appleton and Goam Street. Mr. Clerk?
Kamel Peters?
Hello, thank you. Thank you for having me this evening. This is not my regular situation, so excuse me if I'm a little choppy. But I want to speak to what the meaning behind the sculpture is and what it represents. If you'll give me a moment to describe the middle passage. Do we have an image of the sculpture available? Okay, everyone has. So with the middle passage, the way we came up with the idea of Black Joy is the beginning of African-American history. African-American history started with this middle passage. The atrocity of it, as sad and whatever you want to call it, is really thinking now to the present day and what the future that has been created from this middle passage, the African-Americans that exist now. So the flowers that come out of the ship itself represent, they're all native African flowers and they represent the people. The people that we took were doctors, lawyers, great thinkers, philosophers, astronomers, you name it. We weren't just taking people that wanted to pick cotton. So who I came from as an African-American is that lineage of great thinkers and the fights and struggles from the Harlem Renaissance through the 60s through the present day. We are here because of those people. And to be able to represent that in the city of Lowell and say, here is the triumph that has been created. Now, this sculpture doubles as a planter. The African flowers are the skeletons, the bones, the backbone of the people. But we want to put dirt in it so that it grows new flowers every year. Those new flowers represent the African-American, myself, clinging on to alive and in the present day functioning and living and flourishing. It is those atrocities, those fights, that give me the opportunity to stand before you as an artist. I never expected that my art would bring me to such a platform, yet here I am based off of this great history. And I would hope that that is something that Lowell would love to represent and accept my gift to you as a token of not just representing my people, but acknowledging everything about it and enjoying the beauty of what we call Black Joy.
Mr. Clerk?
Mona Tyree on Zoom. You have to unmute.
I'm sorry. I should have known that. Hello, city council, city manager. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I just kind of want to just reiterate how valuable I think this gift is to the city. Working with Kamel and DIY has been great. The sculpture took a lot of time, a lot of hard work, dedication, tears, sweat equity and I would just appreciate if the city will accept the gift from Kamel and installation of the location. I just want to mention the location, the reason why we actually looked at that location and decided on that location many, many years ago, probably about 20, I would say. The black community used to get together a lot at South Common. We had picnics, we had festivals, we just had, I hang out and it was a great place. That is a place that a lot of the black community keep dear and close to their heart. So that was the thought process of placing the art installation in that area. The sculpture is beautiful and it is, even though it is heartbreaking at the same time, it is absolutely beautiful. So I just want to thank you for your time and your consideration on accepting this gift. Thank you.
Any other speaker, Mr. Clerk?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Mousia?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say that I'm very grateful that this package is finally put together, complete, because now we get to see what Black Joy is. I didn't mean to insult anybody by delaying it, but I really don't like to vote for something that I haven't seen. Not that I thought it would be a bad thing, but I just wanted to see it. And if I didn't delay this for a week, we'd get more information on it than I ever thought we would. And we would have never met you, Kamel. We would have never had the privilege to have you here. So we can tell you in person, thank you very much for your very beautiful gift. I know it was tough for you to get up there and speak. You're not a speaker, you're an artist. But anyway, thank you so much. It was a pleasure and it'll be a pleasure for me to vote yes on it. Thank you.
Councilor Kishya?
Thank you, Mayor Chow. You know, the history behind it is amazing, but it's not the only amazing thing that you're looking at. You know, being a tradesperson, the first thing that I like to look at is wow. You know, when you look at the metalwork in this, I don't know how you did it, but that it's just an amazing piece of metalwork and, you know, it's as amazing as the story. And it's an honor to have this in the city when you look at this and you look at the craftsmanship that went in it. I know people probably don't look that deep into this, but when you look at that metalwork, it's something else. And I'll be happy to vote for this.
Councilor Robinson?
Thank you. Again, projects like these have been a long time coming. We talk about showcasing the different cultures, the different communities our city's made up of. This is a prime example. And this wasn't a city-funded, city-initiated project here. This came to us 100% organically from the community, which is huge. And I think we need to do what we can do to encourage more of this. When we start discussing, let's put what we have to offer and what our community is on a stage to perform, here's a perfect example. And I'm so thankful, this talented artist, this talented group, DIY, everyone that was involved in this. Great job. Case and my colleagues here. This is, again, we see a transformation of Cambodia Town. These are minor transformations of the city as a whole because we have so many different groups that are looking to step up and contribute and I just like to... groups that are looking to step up and contribute and I'd just like to say thank you very much for the contribution.
Counselor Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the speaker, I just wanted to say, this is a fantastic piece of work. I'm extremely impressed with your, with your skills and the story behind it is amazing. I look forward to seeing it in, in the location where it's going to be installed. I think that corner will, will benefit hugely from having something like this. So, so thank you so much for bringing this forward and I look forward to the day it's installed and we can all go down and, and celebrate it. So, thank you.
Counselor Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Kamel, thank you for sharing your beautiful work with all of us and you just did a beautiful speech and, and thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Counselor Yem?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, to you, to Kamel. When we display this, is there a, a portion of the artwork that have a description of what you described? You know, when I go places, I see the sculpture, there, there usually is a description underneath that. And number one, number two, also should have the name of the artist and we would love to see your name there as well for the visitor, for people who admire the artwork. They just want to know who's the artist behind this. So that will be, that's just my, my question and that will be grateful, I mean, that would be great to have the description along with that. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Drinkwater?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I simply want to extend my gratitude to Mr. Peters for being here tonight, for describing your art and for providing this great gift of artwork to the city. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Move to approve.
Before that, Counselor Robinson?
I just have a quick question. So we have a picture of the artwork and, and it's going to be displayed like this picture here? Yes, but there's actually an image of it on a cliff. Oh. So this is. It's rusted, so it's separate pieces. So this will be installed into the ground and then these are both attached to the cliff. So you would have a place to, to put it? Yeah, right on the front. All right. Thank you.
Mr. Peters, if you could speak into the microphone, explain how you're gonna, how this sculpture can be exhibited at the, at the site?
Installation wise?
Yes.
Yes, so the plinth is separate from the hull of the ship and then the top of the ship, the, what you could call the floor of the ship, is also separate. So it all comes apart. The plinth will be filled with weighted bags of stone to hold it down, but it'll also be screwed into the ground, you know, with tap con. So there's a permanent connection to the ground and then the rest of the sculpture attaches to itself, you know, to the plinth and then to the hull of the ship. So once the dirt is planted, I'm hoping that we can put flowers that continue to grow yearly and the plaque is no problem at all. That is definitely something we talked about. So I would love to put my name on it for sure. And yeah, if there's anything else, I think.
Thank you very much and I, I would only hope that we would have this talented artist's name represented the piece that he donated to the city. Thank you.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, through to the council. We were looking at a marker with your name and the story that would be placed on it, but we'll be talking to you about making sure it's, it fits what you think is appropriate.
It definitely will. And I think I failed to mention earlier that, you know, as you mentioned, sir, the organic nature of this process, working with the community members, it was completely Lowell and they came to me to bring this vision to reality. So a lot of times my job is to make your dream come true, to make something that doesn't exist, exist in the present day. So without the committee members that were involved through the whole duration, it took all of us to come up with it and now it's something that I can say, I want to see one in each city or in different states, you know, to let people know that this story carries on and it begins here with Lowell and thanks to them. You know, I couldn't have done it without the committee and Chris, big, big contribution. So thank you for your time.
Well, you're an incredible artist and I think you're an incredible speaker. I think you're fine with that. I know, I'm not so sure you should be shy.
I'll blame that on Hampshire College, Dave.
Thank you, Kamel, for, for being here. Thank you for the incredible artwork and I agree with all the council that mentioned. Motion by Counselor Rourke to adopt, second by Counselor Scott. Mr. Clerk, roll call please.
Counselor Scott?
Yes.
Counselor Yem?
Yes.
Uh, Mei Chao?
Yes.
Counselor Drinkwater?
Yes.
Counselor Gitchia?
Yes.
Counselor Janess?
Yes.
Counselor Leahy?
Yes.
Counselor Mercier?
Yes.
Counselor Noon?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Rourke?
Yes.
That's 11 years.
I want to follow everybody to serve a hand of applause to the artists and DIY artists and councilors. No other suspension of rules. We're now going to go back to where we left off, which was item five on the communication from city manager. These are the motion response. We'll start with alphabet A on parking. Counselor Robinson?
Thank you. And I'd like to thank for the report. I have a couple of questions though, and maybe the parking director can provide the information. I looked at the, the contract that we currently have with the company that we have an agreement to manage the parking garages. And the contract stated January 1st, or January maybe 1st or 31st, I don't have it on with me right now, of 2022 is when it took effect. I'm seeing on the insurance binder, the insurance policy that we were provided doesn't take effect till 7/31/2022. And, and I would just hope that for the previous seven months or whatever of that year, 2022, this, this company had insurance, I would hope, correct?
Absolutely. We had, yeah, they did have insurance and I got this mark, this is, covers us until next, July of '23 and I'll get another one at that point too.
No, no, I don't think you understand my question.
In the past, they were covered, yes. I do have older copies of these.
So, so during the time period of January 2022 up until July 31st of 2022, at the time the contract was awarded, they did have a, a insurance binder on?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments? Counselor Gitchia?
Mr. Mayor, through you to the parking director. I'm, I'm just quizzed after his question there, after Counselor Robinson's question. So, so in a contract was awarded in, in January of that year and somebody only, how did they provide insurance liability only for seven months and then re-up it? Or is, even if it continued over, that means there's a lapse in the contract somewhere where they couldn't have had insurance or?
They were also the contractor previously?
So when did that other, the previous contract end?
December 31st.
Right. So why would they have it all the way till, if they don't know they're getting the next contract, why would you insure yourself for another seven months is my question? Why would you pay that upfront cost till that, till that July 31st date? That's, that, that just seems absurd to me that you would go out and spend seven extra months for insurance that you're not guaranteed you're getting the next contract. So that, that, that's what I guess the question is. I don't, I don't really understand.
Okay, so I, I guess I will go back and pull all those, pull the documents to ensure that we did have insurance during that time.
And I'm not, I'm not saying.
I'll just verify that we did and go from there.
Yeah, I'm not saying they didn't. I just wonder why someone would pay seven extra months of insurance if, if their contract was going to end on December 31st. That, that's my only question to it is that.
Fair enough. I'll look.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Counselor Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the parking director, I just wanted to say thank you for keeping on the contractor and, and working on a lot of these improvements around the various garages. It's, it's clear that work is happening and it's clear that there's more work needed. You know, you and I talk about this, but quite frequently, but I can definitely see that things are improving and things are getting fixed that haven't been fixed for years. So I do want to say I, I notice and appreciate the improvements that are happening and I look forward to the, to the next round of them. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick question. Mr. Ryan, where are we at with the new kiosks?
Glad you asked. I believe the first batch of 62 will be shipped to Lowell the end of next week. We're expecting a total of 142. So approximately two to three, three weeks after the first load, the second load of 80 will be shipped here. We'll use the early garage as a staging ground. The first kiosk install will be at the early garage and then we'll proceed to do 15 to 18 kiosks a day installed from that point. At that time, I've been working with Melissa, we will also have videos and training. We will have just in time, because I don't want to put training out and then new instructions out while we still have the old kiosks. But we're developing all of that. We have it. We've been working with Passport to set up the zones. So, you know, we are getting there. And trust me, the, you'll know, you'll know when the first kiosks show up in Lowell.
Thank you very much for the report. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Counselor Robinson?
Real quick question. As far as the kiosks goes, did we end up going with ones that have advertising capability?
Should be advertising capability with them, yes.
Oh, excellent. Thank you.
No other comments or questions on this item. Thank you, Mr. Ryan, for being the answer to councilor's questions. Just thank you for being here. No other comments or questions. We now go to the next item, which is motions B on baseball parade. Who would like to go first? Counselor Robinson, Gitchia, or Janess?
Thank you. Glad to see this happen. I think, again, you know, with the, with the reorg of the leagues, getting all the kids into the downtown with their families and supporters, I think it's going to be a great day and hopefully the weather hangs out. And I see we have a rain date, so I'm thankful for everyone that made this happen and I'm sure the leagues are looking forward to this as well. Thank you.
Any other comments? Counselor Gitchia?
The only, the only thing I would ask through you to the manager is, is Peter included in this stuff and promoting this, this parade, the parade piece? Are we having the city services helping out with this stuff?
Mr. Manager? To Mr. Manager, to Mr. Rochas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you to the council. Thank you for asking that. So we have worked, Case has worked with, yeah, they are involved. So we are working with the LPD, we're working with Lowell High, we're working with the baseball organization, special events.
Would it be something that we can promote through the cultural affairs and special events of the city that we can promote this? And I know it's short notice now, but I think that it's been promoted great, but I'm just wondering if it could be promoted more on that end?
Oh, there, there are plans in place to promote it through the communications department. Yeah, so that will happen soon in the coming weeks.
Thank you.
Counselor Rourke?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I'm knowing only because a nephew that, that has signed up for T-Ball this year and the email has already reached the house promoting the, the parade, you know, downtown to the Thongs Arena. And this is, you know, it's a really good idea by, by the councilors that filed it and be a pretty exciting day. So, good job.
Counselor Yem?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you, to manager and Mr. Rocha. The question I have, would the team Roberto Clemente League of Lowell are part of this baseball too? The little league called Roberto Clemente League of Lowell. Maria Claudio and with CBA and they the one that organized and been around. So I just want to be sure that they are part of this parade as well. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Rochas?
Okay, um, thank you so much for asking that. So the, my understanding is that the baseball league has unified. All of the different neighborhoods are now under one league. So yes, as far as I'm, I know they are.
I just want to be sure because they've been very active in the acre and Maria Claudio had been the, the, the main person that organized this for all the, the children in the, in the acre and not just the acre kids. They play against other teams from out of state, New York and other things like that. So, and I don't see their names, so I just want to be sure they are part of it. Thank you.
Any other comments? Counselor Janess?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I'm really excited by this. Thank you for the report and putting it together and everyone who's working on it. I think, I think this is going to be a fun time for all the kids and the families and so I look forward to it happening. I think the most difficult part of this though is figuring out who's going to be the grand marshal for the parade. So I don't know who's jockeying for position on that, but I think we should get, get that done and make sure the parade ends with a ceremonial first pitch by that grand marshal, so.
No other comments on this one. We now go to the next motion response, alphabet C on trains. Counselor Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just thank Assistant City Manager Machado for reaching out and receiving the phone number for CSX. Couple residents have already called it.
Is the motion response, need a motion to accept and place on file by Counselor Drinkwater, second by Counselor Leahy on 50I. The motion is passed. We now go to item 5.2. This is the communication on planning board recommendation regarding zoning amendment for marijuana delivery business. We discussed this early in the public hearing. Any comments or questions still? Motion. Motion to approve by Counselor Gitchia, second by Counselor Robinson. On 50I, opposed, no, the I's have it. Motion is carried. We now go to item 6.2. This is the votes from the city manager. 6.2 is vote approve exemption of Julio Pastrana, MGL, Chapter 268A, S20, where food, where food reading, second reading by title. City of Lowell and the city council vote approving the exemption of Julio Pastrana from the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 268A, Section 20. Any comments or questions by anybody? Need a motion to adopt by Counselor Janess, second by Counselor Gitchia. Mr. Clerk, roll call please.
Counselor Scott?
Yes.
Counselor Yem?
Yes.
Mei Chao?
Yes.
Counselor Drinkwater?
Yes.
Counselor Gitchia?
Yes.
Counselor Janess?
Yep.
Counselor Leahy?
Yes.
Counselor Mercier?
Yes.
Counselor Noon? Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Rourke?
Yes.
10 years.
We now go to item 6.4, another vote from city manager. 6.4 is vote declare 16 Campbell Avenue and 17 Albion Street surplus where food reading, second reading by title.
Mr. Mayor, do you want to bundle the remaining votes or?
You want to bundle that one? I think the other property surplus is 6.6. Do you want to bundle that as well?
Yeah, whatever.
Motion by Counselor Leahy, second by Counselor Mercier. I read the 6.4 already. The other one is 6.6. 6.6 is vote declare 32 Union Street surplus and available for sale. Any comments or questions on any of these two items? Need a motion to adopt by Counselor, do you have a comment?
Yes, please.
Counselor Janess, go ahead.
All right, on 6.4, just looking at the, the diagrams that were included, it looks like these, these two lots, Kimball Ave and Albion Street, are, the lots are as big or bigger than some of the lots around them that have houses on them. So I'm just a little curious as to, as to why we aren't doing like an RFP possibly to, to get a house built on this. Maybe it makes sense, maybe it doesn't. I just, I just had to ask a question. Thank you.
Mr. Manager? Through Mr. Manager to Yovani?
Thank you. So the yard sale program is typically used for parcels that are non-developable based on our current zoning. And so as you know, sometimes, you know, lots have housing or, or structures on them from years past that have been grandfathered in. So for the two on, the, the one at Kimball and on Albion Street, we are looking to yard sale, both of those typically, how that process works is once the council makes a decision to, to vote on it, we would outreach to, directly to the abutters of those, of the available lots. And so we tend to use yard sales when the size as of today's existing zoning would not allow for the construction of a structure.
Okay, thank you. Do you, off the top of your head, do you know how much smaller than the typical lot they are? Are we talking 5%? Are we talking 20%?
Honestly, Counselor, off the top of my head, I don't know that.
Okay.
I could get that information for you.
I, I'm just curious more than anything, but thank you.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, through you to the council. It's also an opportunity, Counselor, to try to take some of the, the vehicles off of those streets. I can speak to Albion Street knowing it very well. It's a very, very tight area. It's a very, very tight area. And when we started to look at these, and it was really the council's request for us to re-initiate the yard sale program and, and trying to, Attorney McKenna, who was just here a few moments ago, to really start to look at some of this and to try to help some of our neighbors who own some of these single-family homes, to give them a little opportunity to be, a little bit of green space. So, there's another opportunity there. Some of these four thousand square foot lots, yes, we could put a house there. But, once again, we're trying to increase some neighborhood activity, get some off-street parking, and give people a little, little bit of green space there. That's kind of the thought process behind it.
Okay, that's, that's fair, and I appreciate all that. I just, you know, like I said, I wanted to ask the question, just looking at the map, it looked like, you know, there was, there was space for something, but thank you.
Counsel Leahy?
I just had, so I had the same question, but for the one on Kimball Ave., though. And if you could just remind me, so if we yard sale these, someone can't purchase it and build a home on it, right?
That's correct. The stipulation for the yard sale program would be that the property maintains as open space. So, we've seen a combination of people expanding their existing yards or gardens, or creating like a driveway for a, a house that might not have an existing driveway at this time. So, a stipulation as part of the sale of a yard sale plot is that there cannot be any structure built on that land.
No other comments or questions, and motion adopt by Counsel Drinkwater, second by Counsel Robinson. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Counsel Scott?
Yes.
Counsel Yem?
Yes.
Mayor Chow?
Yes.
Counsel Drinkwater?
Yes.
Counsel Gishia?
Yes.
Counsel Janess?
Yes.
Counsel Leahy?
Yes.
Counsel Mercier?
Yes.
Counsel Noon?
Yes.
Counsel Robinson?
Yes.
Counsel Rook?
Yes.
Eleven years.
The last vote is on a transfer of twenty-five thousand MIS, way through reading, second reading by title. City of Lowell and City Council vote to transfer funds from the PEG Access and Cable-related Fund to the city manager, cable access legal and filing fees, expense account in support of the city's cable video franchise license. Any comments or questions by any of the councilors?
Motion to approve.
Moving through to Counsel Noon, second by Counsel Scott. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Counsel Scott?
Yes.
Counsel Yem?
Yes.
Mayor Chow?
Yes.
Counsel Drinkwater?
Yes.
Counsel Gishia?
Yes.
Counsel Janess?
Yes.
Counsel Leahy?
Yes.
Counsel Mercier?
Yes.
Counsel Noon?
Yes.
Counsel Robinson?
Yes.
Counsel Rook?
Yes.
Eleven years.
Next section on the agenda is Section Seven, Reports from Subcommittee, seven point one, Transportation Subcommittee, March twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-three. Chairperson is Counsel Dan Rook. Counsel Rook, any report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, this evening, five-thirty, we held a Transportation Subcommittee. The subject was our shared streets and spaces update. Joining myself and Counsel Janess and Counsel Noon on the Subcommittee was Counsel Mercier, our DPD Assistant City Manager, Yovani Byers Rose, and our Transportation Engineer, Liz Altman. The main discussion points was a, a four-week trial that will be upcoming within the City of Lowell. The reasons for this is to reduce vehicle speed citywide, reclaim some road space, and increase awareness for, for other roadway users. First off, we are shown a graph that the slower a, a vehicle is going, the less likely fatality or serious injury of pedestrians or those on other mode of transportation other than vehicles. They'll be spread out across the city, and we're using both horizontal and vertical temporary trials to help achieve these goals. There's going to be a rollout program in, in the month of May. The visitors, the city will be visiting each neighborhood group to go over where these locations for the project will be happening. Some of those locations include Billing Street between Aiken Ave. and Bridge, Foster Street between Mail, Sixth and Princeton Boulevard, Sixth and Seventh Avenue between University Ave. and Mammoth Road. As I said before, the trial treatment will be four weeks, and some of the adjustments made will be some speed hubs. Also, we're going to utilize other existing conditions for about six weeks. We're going to do a, a temporary, so, like a circle, a traffic circle, major intersection, to help slow down some traffic. And also, we're going to install some chicanes as well to help, again, once again, narrow the road and reduce speeds and make it safer for the community. And once again, you know, we have gotten some replies through our email concerning some concerns, but the presentation was extremely well-done by our Transportation Engineer. She went through it thoroughly. You know, this will be posted online, Mr. Manager, I'm sure, and will be rolled out to the city's neighborhood groups well before the installation of these temporary treatments. And that will be happening in the month of May, starting June twenty-first, will be the four to six week trial period. After that's done, data will be collected and returned to our engineer and decided what goes on from there. You know, that data will include obviously some neighborhood and some resident feedback to see how well or not well that the, the transformation is working. And we'll be able to utilize these different ways of calming traffic measures throughout the city. They are reusable for up to three years, so it's a pretty, pretty good program, and it's all based around the safety of our streets. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Questions on this Subcommittee report? Counsel Robinson?
Thank you. And I'd like to thank the committee and the Traffic Engineer for this initiative. I would only ask, I know Centerville is having a neighborhood group meeting April third, and if anyone from the administration could come to just discuss this potential rollout, because I believe there's two locations that are mentioned in the report that fall within the district, so it'd be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
No other comments on this report? Need a motion to adopt the report as a report of progress by Counsel Janess, second by Counsel Noon on the favor of the eye, opposed, no, the eyes have it. Motion is carried. We now go to Section Eight on the petitions.
Mr. Mayor?
Who's that?
Mr. Mayor?
Counsel?
If, if I'm not, sorry, over here.
Counsel Drinkwater?
If I'm not mistaken?
Came to the microphone, couldn't make out the voice.
There, I believe the Joint Subcommittee of, of Zoning and Housing might owe you a report. I think it was on last week's and then Saturday's agenda, but I don't know if that was reported on.
Now, if, if I may, I think it was just, I know there's a meeting coming up next week on that, Counsel, and I think we're going to do the report, one big report at, at that time. I think there was a motion on the floor for that.
Oh, to, to report at that time?
Report after, after the continuing meeting, if that's, we can suspend the rules and you can do it now, but that was my understanding.
That's permissible by me. Thank you.
That's okay. With you, Counsel Drinkwater? Yeah, I, I know there was a Subcommittee report pending. With that, I said, we're now moving forward to next on the agenda. Section Eight is on a petition. Eight point one, claims for property damage. Any comments or questions on this one? Here, now, need a motion to refer to Law Department for report and recommendation by Counsel Leahy, second by Counsel Noon on the favor of the eye, opposed, no, the eyes have it. Motion is carried. Next on the items, eight point two, miscellaneous Charles Kafasus request to address City Council regarding enforcement of the reserved dwelling parking ordinance. Mr. Clerk, do we have a right to speak on this one?
The petition is here, Mr. Kafasus. Kafasus? Yes, I'm Charles Kafasus. I own the property one forty-one Mount Vernon Street, the corner of Bonnie and Mount Vernon. Now, it's been, I'll say, over a year about the enforcement of the sign. Now, every time I came in, a police officer called them, you know, after I asked people to move or something, you know, they didn't move, so I had to call the police. And every time I called them, different, every time an officer came, we have a different response. You know, so I showed them the audience and stuff like that, and, you know, other officers came, just gave a ticket and left. And that's the way it should be. You park within the sign, give a ticket, and leave, just like, you used to have, you used to have ladies give tickets in the city years ago, city, you know? And it's very easy. You don't even need to be a super cop. So, now, I went through the, down to the police station, before to complain about the, you know, what about the enforcement? And they gave me the runaround, and nothing happened, and nobody could give me an answer. So, I went to the manager's office, I even approached the managers, assistant managers there. And even, they, they told me the police don't like to enforce the law. So, now, December, I called up again, because someone didn't want to move the car, and officer came, and we had a supervisor come, came, and he didn't want to come, but finally, he came, the dispatcher forced him to come out, and he wouldn't give the sign, he wouldn't give a ticket. I showed him the audience, and I says, you know, I was, the city manager knows about it. They, they told me to get the sign. I said, the city approved it. Everybody knows it. He says, I looked, showed them the audience, oh, that's, that's nothing, that's the City Council. That doesn't mean nothing. I'm a cop, twenty-two years, and we're going to tell me what to do. And anyways, it got to be, I tried to, you know, tell her I'm going to go in front of the city manager tomorrow and tell them. He got upset, and I don't want to tell you what happened after, but, you know, you know, if people don't want to listen to the city manager, and they don't want to listen to the City Council, then what kind of laws we have in this city? Now, I paid for this sign, and the audience sits ten feet from each side of the sign. And, you know, I, I really want to say, the mayor's office is really great, they did a good job, they do a good job, and I'm really proud to be part of that there. And the City Council, very, I mean, the, the city clerk office, very, very helpful, very good. I know about the police department, okay? Now, so now, after the snowstorm, someone called the police on me or something. Police officer came, last time we had a snow emergency, and he was a nice person. There's a lot of nice policemen here, and a lot of nice cops and stuff, you know? So, he told me all his, about what happened December, about with his boss, and I told him, you know, and he says, we're not going to enforce the sign, okay? The green sign that says residential for dwelling only. And I says, well, I says, you know? So, I went back down to the police station, and I still didn't get a response. They gave me a number to call our superintendent secretary or something. Anyways, you know, now, you know, it shouldn't have even come to this point. I don't like to come here. You know, I tried to do it myself, and now, if they tell me it doesn't mean nothing, the City Council doesn't mean nothing, and the manager, who they work for, the manager doesn't mean anything, then I think it's, all I can do is, you know, been at the front of the City Council, and, you know, you can talk to, you know, request the manager to get a report from his people, because they know me very well, I've been there so many times, they know all about it. And, you know, they try to help out, but if they don't want to listen to them, you know?
Mr. Kafasus?
Get up to the city manager.
Mr. Kafasus, I just remind you that your time is up, if you could wrap it up, please?
Wrap it up now, okay? So, I mean, it's up to them to bring up the manager, and, you know, to discuss what is, if they need help, you should help them. All right, so that's all I can say is, I wish, you know, I don't, I just ask for your help, and you can do what you want. All right, thank you very much for your time, all right?
Thank you for here. Any comments or questions on this? Counsel Gishia?
Mayor Chow, through you to the manager. Mr. Manager, you know, it's extremely hard to enforce these things, but this isn't the first time that we've had residents come and, or call us. Every one of us, I'm sure, have received these calls of people who have these green signs, they paid for them, and we've had our departments go out there and not give the ticket at the time of, of the violations. And, and I do agree with the speaker, and if you're paying for something, and there's an ordinance in place, and someone shows up, write the ticket. And I'm wondering if there's a way to track all the calls from Mr. Kafasus to the police station, the response over there based off of it, and if a ticket was written at that point? Because I just think that you're taking quality of life away from people that this council and past councils have given them the right to. If we don't want the green signs, then this body needs to take a vote and say, we don't want to do this. But if we're going to put it out there, that's, a resident can come in and purchase a sign, and they do it faithfully, I truly believe that the regulations should be followed. And I don't know why any resident has to go to the city manager's office, or even the mayor's office, to get a response. And, and it just shows that maybe we don't understand the delicacy of, of these signs and what they mean to certain people's quality of life. And, and I just would ask that in a form of a motion, that the manager, see if there's a way to track all the calls from Mr. Kafasus to the police station, and if tickets were written on those days.
Second.
Motion by Counsel Gishia, second by Counsel Mercier. Counsel Gishia, are you done?
I am, thank you.
Counsel Mercier?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When I saw this in the packet, I happened to write, not, not good, not good. And I can sympathize with the person. You pay ten dollars, I don't care if it was free, you, you paid ten dollars for it, and it's not about the cost, it's about the meaning of it. And you paid to reserve that spot in front of your dwelling, and if someone else is going to park there, what good is this piece of paper or this plaque or whatever it is? It's not, it's worthless. So, when a police officer was called, they should have, even if they gave a warning to the person, and then the next time, if he called again, then they should have got a ticket. I always believe in giving someone a warning. I do want to make a motion to refer this to the city manager to get a report on this. This is not acceptable behavior. I think the police have a motto, and I, and I'm not saying, you know, they're all bad people, they're not, but I don't care how minuscule it seems to the police officer that went here, he had an obligation. Do they have tickets to ticket these people? Or, you know, I'm just very put out by this whole situation, and I don't think it's incumbent upon the man to have to leave his house and go down to the, it's not right, so, thank you for listening. We'll do what we can. Yeah.
Okay. Anybody else? That, how about, Counsel Rook?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, and looking up the one forty-one Mount Vernon Street address, I mean, it's clear as day, the reserved parking space, it's, it's right there. You know, and I know that, that the police department can issue citations, because I've seen them do it, so I'd like to know why it wasn't done. If it wasn't, you know, the car that was there, and he requested it be ticketed, there's really no reason why it wasn't. So, I would join my colleagues in asking why.
Counsel Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I share Mr. Kafasus frustration, and probably, this is not something he wanted to be here for. This may not be Mr. Kafasus's only frustration, maybe other residents that encounter similar situation. So, I mean, when, when resident called police on a reserved dwelling parking, you know, police officers, when arrived there, see a car there, should help resolve that situation, either be giving warning or ticketing, or however you do it, and you have ordinance for a reason. If ordinance not enforced, it's not right. It's not right for citizen to come all the way here and to say, you know, I had enough of this. So, please do something, please, you know, address this situation. Thank you.
Counsel Yem?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I remember the, the word of the parking Terry Ryan talked about, some resident using these, these stickers, it's a way to, what, how should I say it, to causing, you know, some disturbance in the neighborhood. So, I, I just want to leave it at that, because I, I remember Mr. Ryan was talking about a situation where, you know, resident using that residential sticking, parking sticker
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I meant to say, there is a way to track this gentleman's call numerous times. It's called the CAD system and they have that available and they can look it up and see how many times the person called. You know, they, they can do that.
So that's the motion on floor. Uh, Mr. Clerk, I would just clarify because of suggestion by Counselor Gishia and Counselor Mercier to combine, uh,
And the motion was to refer us to, you know, just to, to provide a report regarding the, regarding the situation on that street and as well as the number of calls that were taken by the petitioner.
Acceptable to, to both counselors?
Yes, thank you.
With that said, uh, Counselor Noonan?
Mr. Mayor, uh, can we bundle, um, 8.3 with 8.4 and then after that, 8.5 to 8.7?
My pleasure to do that. Let me just cook a way to vote first. On the, the motions on the floor are in favor of the eye opposed, say no, the eyes haven't. Motion is carry and motion by Counselor Noor to take the bundle 8.3 through 8.7?
No, first is 8.3 to 8.4, which is referred to the law of transportation.
Okay.
And the other is 8.5 to 8.7 that's referred to, uh, that is referred for public hearings.
Okay, uh, motions by Counselor Noonan to bundle 8.3 and 8.4 and bundle 8.5, 8.6 and 8.7 together. Second by Counselors Rook. Let me just read all of them and then if anyone would like to make comment, you can make comment on each one individually. 8.3 miscellaneous, Robert Hooker Senior requests installation of handicap parking spot on Market Street near crosswalk at Family Dental. Bundle with 8.4, which is a miscellaneous, Jacqueline Alameda Vargas requests installation of handicap parking sign at 134 Lakeview Avenue. The next set of bundles, 8.5 through 8.7. 8.5 is Comcast Southern New England requests installation of four inch underground conduit for 600 Lakeview Avenue. 8.6 Comcast Southern New England requests installation of four inch underground conduit from Coke Street to Merrimack Street. And the last, uh, motion to be bundled with that, uh, is 8.7. Western Gas DPA National Grid requests moving existing, existing gas line to accommodate water work by the city of Lowell. Any, uh, Mr. Clerk, do we have any registered speaker on any of these items?
They're not registered, but I think these people are going to speak on some.
Okay.
Motion to spend rules so they can speak.
Motion is spent by Counselor Gishia, second by Counselor Leahy.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. I'm Robert Hooker. And, um, this three dentist's office and I'm, I go to Family Dental. I was there on a rainy day. There was no parking spot. As you can see, I'm on oxygen and I do have a handicap plate in front. There's two legal. I already paid my pocket ticket, by the way, because I don't have anything laying over my shoulder. But I felt that I had to put it to the clerk's office attention. There's a space there in front of Family Dental where you could even put in a meter or like myself, have a handicap spot, okay? I did, like I said, I did pay my ticket. But I felt that it should be looked at because, and I even had a lady in the clerk's office that a hundred percent agreed with me. She lived in the area, okay? It was raining out and I had to get into the dental office. I have to go back again tomorrow. Hopefully finally get my dentures. I have implants. There's another thing because I've almost been into three accidents in the last year. Coming down Market Street, I live on High Street and I'm coming from High Street to downtown. Market Street, I mean, is a one-way. You're not supposed to take a left onto Bridge Street. I've had people cut me off. If I wasn't alert, I could have been in some serious accidents. I had a police officer that didn't even acknowledge that he knew about that sign. That sign has been up over five years. So as a citizen of Lowell, I feel that you should know about this. And, um, one more thing is I think, um, something should be done about North Carmen with all the syringes. Watching little kids pick them up and bring them to their mother. That's all I have to say. I have to go because my oxygen is low.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is there anybody in the law department that can answer this question? Because I'm not a lawyer, but this is what I'm understanding. So if you are downtown or anywhere and there's no handicap parking spot available and you have a handicap plate or plaque on, can't you park at any regular meter for nothing?
Yes, you can. Yes, you can, ma'am. Rita.
That's right, that's right.
What I'm saying, I drew it out on a map at the council's, at the clerk's office. I have it here exactly how it is. This is Family Dental right here. There's a car spot here, meter, car spot. Here's your walkway. Then you go down, I forget the name of the street. Palmer Street. No parking for a handicap and it's always full, okay? There's no parking. Sometimes I park over here. There's parking, a plenty of the blue shamrock, okay? There was no parking. Across the street where they were talking about earlier, where the brickwork is, there's no handicap spots, okay? I had to get in and out. I thought I was going in just to have teeth fixed. And it's, I was there for two and a half hours. I came out with a ticket. I came down and I paid the ticket.
What do you mean you pay, you got a ticket?
Yeah, I got a ticket.
You got a ticket. Where did you park?
Right here. There was no meter there, ma'am, no.
You parked there and there was no meter?
No, but look at how big that spot is.
Yeah, I see. And that's where you want to?
I would like to either have a handicap spot or a police for us, uh, even for a meter for the city to get that there.
We'll give the manager your artwork, okay? Thank you.
And, and the other one was the coming down Merrimack Street. That sign says, do not take a left-hand turn onto Bridge Street. Has been there for five years. And I've come down it and I've almost, matter of fact, just last week, I almost got killed from a guy coming from New Hampshire flying around that corner. But I was paying attention. So.
Pay attention.
Okay.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Hooker for appearing to speak. I know it's a little bit of risk with oxygen tank run, run low. We'll refer this to the law department. Thank you for being here. Or the transportation engineer for that matter. Thank you. No other comments? Any comments? Counselor Leahy?
Just one quick comment. Um, the Merrimack Street left is an issue. Two people pulled out in front of me today. So I don't know if we can put a camera there or whatever, but, you know, when you, you can't turn from Merrimack onto Bridge Street, uh, leaving downtown. So I had two people today turn right in front of me too. So.
Sure. We'll, we'll have the tough, the transportation engineer will take a look at that. No other comments? All in favor of the eye opposed, say no, the eyes haven't. The motion is carry. And that the complete, all the miscellaneous and the public hearing request. We now move on to section nine on the agenda, which are the city council motions. We'll start with 9.1. A motion by Counselor Robinson requests city manager explore the feasibility of contracting out the city of Lowell's hiring processes and procedures. Second by Counselor Yem.
There's a registered speaker, Mr. Mayor.
Please call the registered speaker.
Bobby Tugby-Elliott. He's on Zoom.
Hi, good, good evening, uh, city council. Um, my name is Bobby Tugby-Elliott of, um, 33 Middle Street. I appreciate the attention, uh, that hiring practices and human resources have received as of late. It's something that several officials have been addressing for some time. From then, School Committee Scott in 2013 to Counselor Noon in 2018 and 2020, requesting workforce demographics to former Mayor Samaris pushing for, uh, for recruiting initiatives. On a, on a personal and professional note, I've, um, previously worked at an organization where prior to specialized recruiters coming on board, majority of the recruiting functions were hot, were, were, um, were based specifically in the departments. And, and what that means is department managers had the sole responsibility to post the jobs, to, uh, receive the applications, to, um, interview, develop their own interview questions and then screen and ultimately make the final hiring decision. And when they completed all of those, uh, processes, um, they got HR involved to basically, do the, the administration benefits, so forth and so on. Some of the, briefly, some of the challenges that, that I found in, in that kind of a setup was some department managers did not have the adequate training when it came to employment law. And so there were some questions that were typically asked of candidates that were illegal. And managers did not know that and candidates did not know that. But, um, but, but it is a problem and it's, it's the responsibility of, of the HR professionals to, to be aware of how to conduct, um, excuse me, it's, 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 it's the responsibility of managers if they're in a, in a hiring capability and capacity to be aware of these things. And so HR is, is a critical function and, um, and they, they act as a business partner to hiring managers. And so I appreciate Counselor Robinson's motion because clearly there's a problem. And, and there's a desire to, um, find some solutions around that. And so some professional suggestions to think about during this, um, I believe it was worded as a feasibility agreement is, um, is, is there an opportunity to hire dedicated recruiters who specialize on certain positions within HR? I found that some positions are handled in-house and there are other higher level and harder to fill positions that may have the use of a search firm. And I think that this is an area where Counselor Robinson's request could be applicable. In addition, uh, you know, as we think about the role and function of HR, you know, I think it's important to that we continue to best utilize best practices in, in, in the industry and to also refer back to recommendations from the HR audit. There was a litany, uh, there were a litany of, uh, recommendations, uh, from that audit. And I think it's important that as we move forward with recommendations, that it's rooted in best practices. And that we're not being reactive, but, but certainly making sure that we're, we're making, uh, industry-related recommendations. And, and then lastly, um, and, and probably most importantly, that we, to think about, you know, what kind of message is being sent throughout the city, throughout the organization around personnel accountability, productivity, as, as well as professional development when we have to outsource tasks out of concern of a department's quality of work. As an HR profession, part of, part of the world that I came from is, you know, how do we coach? How do we mentor? How do we develop? And sometimes we have to coach individuals, um, uh, within an organization. And if the quality of work is, is lackluster after adequate professional development opportunities, how do we coach them out of the organization so that it's not, it's not continuing to be a risk to the organization? And so, um, again, thank you to Counselor Robinson to bring this to the forefront. I think that these are important conversations to have. And then also just thank you to, um, all of the officials then in the past and present who are continuing to, um, keep this conversation, um, alive because it's, it's critical. And ultimately, this is for the benefit of, of every single employee within, within the city of Lowell. Thank you.
Mr. Clerk, any other speaker?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Robinson?
Thank you. Um, so this motion came about because, A, we've been hearing repeatedly, we're short-staffed. The report, even though it wasn't thorough and didn't really touch base with too many, you know, within the city, was limited as a lot of reports are, um, they recommended eight full-time staffers in that department. We just saw a $55 an hour part-time position get created in that department. We're struggling to do what we have to do in that department. One of the biggest complaints we hear from residents, from many, is about functions of that department. So this proposal came about exploring, taking that function, not the entire department, that function to lift the workload and free up existing employees to concentrate in other areas. Now, other hires, and, and I'm well aware, you know, they go for headhunters utilizing different organizations out there for, for top tier. That doesn't mean we cannot look at this because by considering taking the hiring function out of that department for the rank and file employees, because I tru, I truly believe the administration should be able to pick department heads in-house through their interview process because that's setting up your cabinet, so to say. Rank and file employees, we remove that function from that struggling department because they're tasked with all these other duties and functions such as insurance, benefits, retirement. They, they help assist the retirement, um, signing up for different initiatives, the training, coming to training. I know in Tingsboro, I just had to complete on the computer, um, the new updated ethics training. All of these different initiatives that keep coming up. We have license requirements with, um, creditable hours that are required by many of our employees. It makes it very challenging for any of our HR professionals to keep their finger on the pulse of so many moving pieces. And so this motion is basically saying, how do we alleviate some of that workload and neutralize some of the problem? It's, it's killing two birds with one stone and, and I'm asking for a feasibility, look into the feasibility of it. If it comes back that the price is astronomical and it's just not something that we can attain, because a lot of this is, it's, we have policies that, that our employees don't have the, the ability to monitor and, and execute. And, and that's really what this speaks to. We, we have licenses that, that need to be monitored. Who has them? What's the timeframes? Many different, I believe there's 14 different organized trades unions or, or labor unions within the city and everyone has different language that govern different areas. So we are asking a lot for a, a, a very limited amount of people out of that department. So this is just one function that I'm seeing to take a look at and if it makes sense, let's have a discussion. Thank you.
Counselor Mercier?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I hear where Counselor Robinson is coming from, but I think I'm very leery about what I'm hearing here and I don't think it's in the purview of the city council to be involved with this. I, I really don't. I'd like to get a report or a ruling from the solicitor's office, the law department, to find out if we even could do that. I, I don't know that we can. And I'm not comfortable with doing something that I feel is violating the law in the city. And I think this might be one of those gray areas where we're threading on territory that we have no right to do. That's just, I know there's a workload. I understand that, but I think I need to get a ruling here as to if that's legal for the council to do that.
If, um, Mr. Willent could answer that, what has been a purview of what we're trying to do tonight, even take a vote?
I'm not saying he can answer that right now, but.
Or do you want to wait to look into it and give us an answer later? Report. Mr. Manager?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the council. If it, if it's okay with the council, I'd like to take this in, look at it. Maybe I can talk to Mr. Williams and the, uh, legal staff, but, um, points well taken by Counselor Robinson as well as all of us and maybe we can, um, revisit this at another meeting, whether we can do it or whether we can't. But, um, I think we're all, uh, on the same page with, uh, some of the staffing and, uh, and what we need to get done. And so if that's okay with you, Counselor, or?
I'm not saying it's a bad idea. I'm just saying I don't know that we can actually do that.
Mr. Manager?
Mr. Mayor, through you to the council. Would it be okay if we look into it to see if it can be done?
Yes, please. Because if we took a roll call, I don't know that I could support it unless. it unless I had the answer.
So, maybe Counselor Robinson, is something based on Counselor Mercier's suggestion, would you refer us to the law department to give us a finding on...
No, because if you read the way the motion's written, have the manager explore the feasibility. I mean, every time a tough issue that we get complaints about comes up, it's like, let's throw a block, let's try to throw a curveball, or let's try, oh, you can't do this, you can't do that. I'm asking the administration to explore the feasibility of doing something different in HR because the hiring practice is the number-one concern and the number-one problem we repeatedly hear. I've been here for, what, 14, 15 months? Over and over and over, we hear hiring practice is flawed, hiring practice has problems. Let's look at doing something different. Whether or not we can do it, that'll come back in the report. My request is exploring the feasibility, so I don't need an opinion right now on the floor. Explore the feasibility of doing something along these lines. Thank you.
Counselor Gutierrez?
Thank you, Mayor Chow, and I do agree with Counselor Mercier, but when you say explore feasibility, it's putting an idea in the manager's thought process. 9.5, I wrote the same thing about combining two departments. Exploring the feasibility means you're putting an idea out there, you're not telling or directing anybody under Plan E to do anything. It's idea sharing, it's creation, it's thought process. So, I do agree with Counselor Mercier that there is a fine line between if someone had told the manager, directed the manager to do a function, but as you look at it, it says, explore the feasibility. And everybody knows in here that when we touch upon the hiring process, we all have different opinions of what's right and wrong. And the Clifton-Lawson report highlighted many things that we don't even hit on still to today. And, you know, when we look at the management of that department, we all have very big questions, or at least I could say I do, I'll speak for myself. There's very big questions on things that are happening down there. Do we have enough people? Do we have, you know, the right people? There are a lot of differences in opinions on that department because if 30 people apply for a job, 29 are unhappy with the results, and that's just the facts. Everybody who applies for something thinks that they deserve the opportunity. So, I do agree with this going forward. I think that it's asking someone for, to idea share, it's not telling anybody anything, there's no directive there, and I think that once the solicitor comes back, that's what will be said. But if it is out of line, then I certainly would go through the mayor to the solicitor. I certainly will withdraw 9.5 because all I'm trying to do is idea share and trying to make government more efficient. And if that's not the case, we can't do that, then open government really isn't open. Thank you.
Counselor Scott? You defer to Counsel Rook? I thought you had your hands up earlier. Counselor Rook?
Yeah, my guess is that if this comes back, the solicitor's going to make a ruling, whether he can have it even go through this or not, and if that's the answer to the motion, that makes, you know, that makes sense if, you know, if it receives the manager's office and the solicitor makes a ruling that it's not in our purview, my guess is the response is going to say as such. Yes?
Mr. Manager?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to the council, yes, I think that would...
Sure. All right.
Counselor Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I share Counselor Mercier's concern with the Plan E government, but Counselor Mercier, I don't think this motion, the only difference that what I filed 2018 and 2020, is that a contract, you know, out to look at. This is not to ask the contractors, you know, in terms of hiring staffing for the city, just the process of that hiring and the procedure. And moreover, Counselor Robinson, he asking for explore, look into it, and to see how our hiring process and procedures, should there be anything changed? I think if we follow, for me, Counselor Gutierrez is correct, if we follow the Clifton-Lawson report and follow through that, I mean, we're in the right path, basically, but again, asking to explore, I support the asking to explore. As long as the report not coming back and said, well, you know, let's hire contractor to hire staffing for the city, and that's in violation of the Plan E government, really. But here, it's asking to look into, have contract, look into the hiring process and procedure for the city. So, not saying that that's the path we're going to go, but the manager would know what to do, so I thank you.
Counselor Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am okay with looking at this as far as whether or not we're looking at training, compliance, you know, whether or not we're staffed enough for HR, that we're following HR hiring policies and procedures. I am in no way in favor of outsourcing the HR department. I think that is something that definitely is under the manager's purview under Plan E government, but I will vote to look at the feasibility, whether or not it's even allowed, for it to come back to us. Thank you.
Counselor Drinkwater?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I think we're looking at the feasibility of this, and, you know, I would just say that we could get something back saying, yes, this is feasible, but I still don't know if it would be advisable. And this is what we hire the city manager to do, to run his department, so I would just say, you know, when it comes back, I trust in the city manager to run this department, and even if this is something feasible, but in the opinion of the city manager, it's not an advisable way to run that department, I would like to know that through the response. Because I, too, have reservations about sort of overstepping into a management role, what we hire the city manager to do. So, you know, I was, I had my reservations about this motion, and, you know, I will support it just to get something back, but again, I just say, I'm interested in not only the feasibility, but in the opinion of the city manager. Would an idea like this even be advisable, or do we just, you know, allow the administration to run the department and prove upon processes and procedures as they see fit? Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other comments or questions? It sounds like there's different opinion on the floor, so I'm going to ask for a roll call, I'm going to do a roll call. And for me, I'm not going to support, I think even if it's feasible, I don't want to send the wrong message to the department where they're doing a lot of work. I know they have a lot of things to do to improve, but given the capacity of our departments and the plan of our government, I think the human resource department should continue to do what they are doing, so I'm going to ask for a roll call. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Counselor Scott?
Yes.
Counselor Yem?
Yes.
Mayor Chow?
No.
Counselor Drinkwater?
Yes.
Counselor Gutierrez?
Yes.
Counselor Janess?
Yes.
Counselor Leahy?
No.
Counselor Mercier?
Yes.
Counselor Noon?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Rook?
Yes.
Nine years.
Thank you. Next on the motion, 9.2, Counselor Robinson requests the manager have the property department provide a report on how many employees have been hired without their required licensing at the time of hire? How have they been compensated? Current status on their licensure? And what is the positions of the CBA language? Second by Counselor Yem. Counselor Robinson?
Motion speaks for itself.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none. Counselor Scott, you have a question?
Just a comment. How far back are we going with this, I guess is my question? And also, I guess I don't have an issue, I think I'd just kind of like to know how we track compliance in general? Like, as far as, you know, we hire somebody, it's in the job description that they have to have this license within six months? How do we make sure that that happens? Do we use software that kind of tracks all of this? So, if you could just include that in the report? Thank you.
Counselor Gutierrez?
Also, while we're talking about this, I know that the town of Drake, I read one of their job postings that it's okay for people to apply for jobs if there's no one there, and like, say, the CDL driver. When you look at the CDL position, and they don't have the position, they pay like $18 an hour, I believe I read, and then when they get it, they get like $23 an hour, and then after they have the CDL in hydraulics, that's when they actually max out to the $26 or whatever it is. It's just posted on there, and I just wonder, while we're looking at this hiring and licenses, I think it all ties together. Is there a will of management to look into something like that and put it in tiers? If you don't have it, we'll still hire you, but we're going to hire you at less pay than the starting step of somebody who has it? Because when I was at the water department, I know they hired people for a position that didn't have it, but they still get paid on the first step of, like, somebody did have it. So, I think Drake just posted a driver that CDL requirements, but they are allowing people to apply who don't have it, but it's less pay. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions on this one? Hearing none, on the face of the eye, pause, say no, the eyes have it, motion is carry. The next motion is 9.3, Counselor Robinson requests the manager work with the Western Avenue Studios to help create a safer, more welcoming and clean experience for residents and guests, second by Counselor Yem. Counselor Robinson?
Thank you. This is something, I guess, I was speaking to the, basically, the facilities manager down there, and they've been experiencing an increase in a lot of different issues where they're bringing people in from all over. They're currently doing a study to show the data of how far away people are coming, what the volume of people are coming to that area to frequent and visit and eat and all the other things they offer. The roads have had some good-sized potholes for a while, there's been, it's dark over there at night. I know it is an issue with the train tracks at the bottom there, but that's not much we can really do about that. But then, they're starting to see, they installed security cameras over there, there's starting to be more and more people coming, checking doors to get in, in the mailrooms, I'm hearing. So, I guess there are some things going on over there, and any assistance that the city could provide to help clean up that area, brighten up that area, and make it more welcome and inviting, as well as signage. If you're coming over School Street Bridge, you kind of have to know where you're going already because it is not really clearly labeled or identified, or nothing really stands out to draw your attention down to that section of the city. So, again, anything we could do to help, to work with them to increase and make that a better environment for all would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions on this motion? Counselor Leahy?
Thank you. Yeah, this is a good motion when, you know, we should look at the lighting, the streets, and again, if there's anything we can't do with the railroad tracks, we've had many motions over the years, if that continued to Dutton Street, maybe? I mean, it would make it, you know, a lot safer of an area because it's not a dead-end road. You know, we've tried to work with Congressman Songus's office over the years, and with no luck, but if there's any way we can open that up, that would make it so much safer, so much more productive from going from downtown to Western. So, anything we can keep trying to do with that would be appreciated. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? I just want to say briefly, my excellent motion, Counselor Robinson, that area, Western Avenue Studios, is such a gem to the city. It brings not only residents from different sections of the city to go visit the different studios and the small businesses inside the building, but it brought people from other communities around the region and the state, and even the other states, so really bring a lot of tourism, a lot of experience to that section of the city. I absolutely wholeheartedly support this motion. Hearing no other comments or questions, on the face of the eye, pause, say no, the eyes have it, motion is carry. The next motion is 9.4, it's a joint motion by Counselor Robinson and Counselor Gutierrez to request the city manager work with the property department to consider adoption of Boston's SCOF law, property owner list ordinance. Who would like to go first? Counselor Robinson?
Thank you.
Counselor Gutierrez, just volunteer you, by the way, so...
Thank you. This is something that I believe the Boston City Council's weighing in on and looking at right now currently, and I think we've heard before I've sat in the seat, the council has repeatedly been looking for kind of a tool or some way to strengthen our inspectors with inspectional services, how can we deal with problem landlords? It's an issue that continuously gets talked about here, and I think this could be a great opportunity for us to look at something that might work in other communities. It creates a list of these problem landlords that have repeated violations, and it puts them almost on a timeout from accessing any city services. So, whether it be they need occupancy permits, whether it be inspections, anything along those lines, I think Boston has it drafted out for a 12-month period if you're placed on that list, and then you have to bring everything back into compliance to get off of the list. So, it gives us, and our inspectors and all the people that work very hard and repeatedly have to deal with these issues, at least some kind of tool at their disposal. Thank you.
Counselor Gutierrez?
Thank you, Mayor Chow, and I agree with Counselor Robinson. I think that we need more bite to absentee landlords, and we've talked about this for years, and I think after you read the Boston one that they're going through right now, I think it makes sense. So, that's the reason why we're here, putting it forward, and I think that the manager has the tools to have departments actually look at this and see if it makes sense within our city. It doesn't mean one size fits all, there could be changes to it that we see fit, but I think it's a great start to a process that may work well in the city. Thank you.
Counselor Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I'd just like to say thank you to my colleagues for bringing this forward. I saw this last week and immediately thought this was something that we could be able to use in our, in our constant battles we have with various property owners that cause issues for their neighbors. So, I think this is a, this is a good step, and, you know, I applaud you guys for beating me to the punch because I was going to file it, but I didn't get it in in time, so you guys took care of it, and I don't have to. Thank you.
Counselor Rook?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, Lowell did have something like this, it was a neighborhood enforcement program, the NE program, that I know that former Inspector David Olet, and I believe our assistant city manager, was a part of back in '16 and '17. It's a great idea, and not sure why it went away, but I do remember walks that were taken through certain neighborhoods in the city, and it was really effective. Landlords went on a list, and just as Counselor Robinson said, they were frozen until they came into compliance with their properties. So, not necessarily sure why it went away, but, you know, it's a good motion to file and to bring it back. Thank you.
Counselor Noon?
I learned from Counselors Rook as well that way back, I think we have policies where two and more families get inspected, I believe, every three years. So, I don't think we are there. I mean, we are really, really behind with all the 42,000 housing units in the city. We are way behind, and I said the other day to the commissioner, maybe we need to take a look at, you know, getting more inspectors because the way, the number that we have now in the developmental service, not meeting at all, whether it be house inspector or building inspector, those two are working together for a reason. I believe at the time, Bernie Lynch was the manager, brought those two departments together and instituted those policies, that is, every three years, I believe, all the two and more family get inspected throughout the city of Lowell, and I don't think we are there. We are way, way behind in terms of the inspection.
Counselor Gutierrez?
And I agree with Counselor Rook on the fact that, you know, as municipalities have turnover in employees, this is what happens, things fall through the cracks, and then they have to be brought back up. And the major thing for any functioning government is to try to retain the employees that have the knowledge in between, and as we can't keep retaining long-term employees, this is what happens, these programs fall off the map of new administrations to new management teams. So, this is a good point, and maybe we also look back at 2016 and 2017, and when the assistant city manager was there, and incorporate those pieces into it. But whatever the functioning piece is that makes this stronger for our city, that's what I'm sure this body wants to see. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, on the face of the eye, pause, say no, the eyes have it, motion is carry. The next motion is another motion by, this is a motion solely by Counselor Gutierrez to request the manager look into the feasibility of removing the recreation department from the health department organizational structure and placing the recreation department back into the organizational structure under the PW and the parks department, second by... under DPW and the parks department, seconded by Counselor Robinson. Counselor Gishia.
Thank you, Mayor Chow. As we had started to look into the parks department and the recs department not collecting the fees, we had meetings. And as those meetings went on, Counselor Mercy and Counselor Leahy can attest to it, as we started talking more and more into it, we started to realize that there may be a miss here. That, you know, the health department, we're sending things to the health department, but the health department isn't talking to the parks department. So I think there may be a need for this. But again, this is the manager's purview. It's just a thought that's out there from, you know, having these subcommittee meetings and watching. One person takes in applications, another department does this. And there's a lot of crossover between these two departments. And in the past, these two departments were one. It used to be parks and rec. And then somehow rec got divided out and went the way of the health department. And I just think that this is something that should be looked at. And I hope I have the support of the manager to look into this and give it a serious, hard look in the rest of our body. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions on this motion, Counselor Robinson?
Thanks. I would just like to say, you know, I worked for the city in the time when we were under rec. It was always parks and rec. I mean, even when I did summer youth employment programs, it was always parks and rec. And for whatever reason, they did change it structurally. I'm not sure why. But something that's jumped out is the issue around permitting with the parks and, you know, all the different things requiring staffing at the park locations because of events. So I think this is a good motion to take a look at. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions on this one? Hearing none on favor, the eye, post say no, the eyes have it, motions carry. The next motion is motion number nine point six. A motion by Counselor Mosier to request city manager report on why police calls on the main number cannot be answered by a live dispatcher in a timely fashion. Seconded by Counselor Rook. Counselor Mosier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I made this motion right after I had an experience when calling to report an issue that involved the police presence, but was not of an emergency nine-one-one situation. I thought I'd call the police supervisor who said he would connect me to dispatch. While waiting for a person to come on the phone, I was asked to leave a message and someone would get back to me. This was all a message situation. Upon making this motion, I realized that this scenario was shared by others. People text me and people called me and they said that they had the same experience and it happened to them. So let me share with you a scenario. Three homeless men are harassing an elderly woman outside a church. This is not an emergency situation per se, but the police were called. Let me connect you to dispatch. Hello, this is dispatch. Leave a message and we will get back to you. Hogwash, unacceptable. Let me talk to a human being. The phone system needs to be changed to allow people to talk to a person without entering into a maze of dead ends. It may not be an immediate emergency, but it is important to get an immediate response. I was glad to hear that a few people shared the same concerns as me. Having said that, next week, I did these something else behind the scenes, trying to get to the bottom of something, which I do so that I don't have to tie up this council with a ton of motions. When I'm not getting anywhere, the ball is dropped. Next week, I'll make a motion concerning the shrine and police presence because I want to see it in black and white on a piece of paper called an agenda because it doesn't seem to be getting done any other way. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none on favor, the eye, post say no, the eyes have it, motions carry. The next motion is nine point seven, a joint motion by Counselor Noon and Counselor Yem to request city council recognize and congratulate the Daily School for winning a two thousand twenty-three Stockloza Knowledge Bowl, as well as the Stockloza and Pine Schools for their second and third place showings. Any comments, questions by anyone, by the maker of motions, Counselor Noon?
I'm not sure if this is the places for a city council, maybe for a school committee meeting.
We can congratulate them.
I thought I'd just bring it up and then just to recognize, congratulate our youngsters. You know, I know that Daily School came first and then Stockloza second and Pine's third. And I know if we were to do that, to honor them, recognize them, you know, one of those students will be the CFO's daughter.
Great motions. Any other comments until the city manager comes back with a report? If any necessary, I want to congratulate all the schools on behalf of the city council and the city administration. On favor, the eye, post say no, the eyes have it, motions carry. The next motion is motion nine point eight, a joint motion by Counselor Noon and Counselor Yem to request the city manager provide a city council with a report on reviewing the process by which ALPA funding proposal will review and prioritize. Further, request city manager provide city council with a list of all submitted proposals, including information as to which proposals were sent by Lowell residents and women-owned enterprises. Who would like to go first? Counselor Yem, Counselor Noon, volunteer you?
Motion speaks for itself.
Excellent. Any other comments, Counselor Rook?
Yeah, not disagreeing with the motion. You know, are we okay sticking our noses into ALPA funding as a council?
Mr. Manager, any comments on that?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Read to the council. We're always willing to share information with the council on all of this when it comes to ALPA funding.
Thank you.
No other comments or questions on favor, the eye, post say no, the eyes have it, motions carry. The next motion, the next motion is also joined by Counselor Noon and Counselor Yem request city manager work with appropriate department to review locations throughout the city where trees should be planted in tree pits along roadways. Who would like to go first? Counselor Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is one way, I believe, to, one of many ways to reduce or to do street commerce. And so I think by placing, you know, planting a tree in tree pit, the one that's, you know, it's been there before, but now it's, you know, it was rooted out or whatever the reason, no longer there. This is one way to replan it so that to reduce, you know, the, provide, you know, slower traffic and whatnot. So I thought this may be an idea to do so. But if it's not, then scrap it, no need to. But I think this is one of the way that city engineer can help in terms of identify some of those areas and, you know, planting a new tree in that tree pit. Thank you.
Counselor Yem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is something that we can take a look for the funding, ALPA funding. It is, it is very important, the near to my heart because I live in the acre. If you travel on Market Street in the acre, starting from Cabot Street all the way to Salem Street to the river, that's where Lowell Housing Authority is all concrete. And then by having tree, planting tree, it's reduced the heat index in that particular neighborhood and beautify that area. And I know the area is under development right now. And hopefully the acre crossing will help rejuvenate it and then some tree planted. But the acre one is just ended right Cabot Street. But from Cabot Street, the name changed to Salem Street, go all the way to the river and university. So that area as a whole, it needs some tree planting to reduce the heat index in that neighborhood and beautify the area as well. Thank you.
Excellent comment, Counselor Yem, Counselor Robinson.
Thank you. I know for a while, years ago, Diane Tradd, when she was here, we had a running list of trees where the root systems weren't invasive. I don't know if the city still has one of those or I'm sure it's easy to gather. But one of the things I noticed that was neat, in Canada actually, is when they planted the trees, they left about a foot and a half of space from where the soil covered the root ball and the grade of the sidewalk. So, so I mean, there was never really any chance of the roots penetrating or bothering the walkway because I know that is a big problem and we've seen it in every neighborhood in the city. It's just these old trees desperately needed and to break up the heat island effect. But it's, we also see the alternative to it when it's not done correctly. So maybe we start looking at a list of trees that the roots aren't going to be, you know, invasive to the walkways and create, mitigate as much damage as possible when it comes to the tree planters because I think it is something that we're lacking citywide. Thank you.
Through you to the manager. It's very disappointing to have a resident call you. And I was going to put in this motion next week and I still will. From Highland Ave, we got a call that one side of the street, they're going to repave the road. And one side of the street obviously doesn't have the utility wires and the other one does. And the resident was told that engineering doesn't plan on putting trees on the side that has the utilities, so the overhead electrical lines. But there are plenty of trees that don't grow over a certain height that would never interfere with any of that. So next week, I'm going to actually put in a motion asking what the policy is for engineering on tree plantings underneath utility lines because that's a ridiculous statement to say to any resident in this city is, we don't do it because of utility lines, so we're not planting trees under there. That's really narrow-minded to even think somebody would say that to a resident. So I don't know that that is true or not true. The resident was the one who passed it on. I'm hoping that that's not the case. And Highland Ave is going to have trees on both sides because it's like cutting one side of your head of here and walking around with half of your head shaved and the other half with here. It just makes no sense to do that to a street that's tree lined on both sides. And, you know, it's a beautification to the neighborhood and they're welcoming to it. So if you want to answer it that way without a motion, I think if you want to add it to this, that would be, I'd be happy to entertain that rather than put in another motion and just keep talking about the trees. If you could just add it to this motion and see what the, if it's okay with the maker of the motions on what the policy is for paving, when they do paving, plantings underneath overhead utility lines.
So okay, by the two makers' motion to include that language from Counselor Gishia?
Yes.
To be part of that report?
Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments or questions on that? Hearing none, Counselor Yem.
Quick comment. On ALPA Day, we planted some tree and I was privileged to be part of it. And I asked someone, how do you select trees? You know, and they look at me like I have blank. And that's what Counselor Gishia was talking about. There's certain tree that would not penetrate and damage a sidewalk, would not reach a certain heights. And I think that's the question. And hopefully by the motion respond, we'll find out which tree that is. Thank you.
No other comments or questions on favor, the eye, post say no, the eyes have it, motions carry. The next motion is also joined by Counselor Noon and Counselor Yem. I thank you two on the phones a lot this week. To request the city manager work with our state delegation to ensure the financial burden of the surrounding community's homeless population coming to Lowell is shared by said communities. Counselor Noon and Counselor Yem, who would like to go first?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know that my colleague shared his concern. We know that housing insecurities and homelessness is not just a Lowell problem. It's a regional problem, yet Lowell bear the burden in terms of financial and everything else. That's why I thought maybe ask our state delegation to help us here. Working up there in the state house and to maybe also working with the city and town to say, look, share the burden here. This is not just our problem. So that's why I filed it. I don't, I'm not sure to what extent the state delegations can do about this, but I just put it out there.
Any other comments? You also, Counselor Yem. No other comments on favor, the eye, post say no, the eyes have it, motions carry. We already taken up motion nine point eleven. We now go to motion nine point twelve. Counselor Scott requests city manager have the appropriate department install no commercial vehicle signage on Eastern Street, seconded by Counselor Drinkwater. Counselor Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had residents reach out to me on Eastern Street, actually around that whole area. I should have included more than just that because residents reached out and said, could you include Grafton and Godreagh and the streets right around the Gulf Gas Station and the Dunkin' Donuts that's there? The Home Depot Expo Center opened in Tewksbury and we experienced quite a bit of increased traffic because of that. But what the vehicles are doing, straight trucks and tractor trailers now are all using that gas station in Dunkins more than ever before because of the increase in traffic. And they are doing turnarounds in the residential streets and parking along the sides of the roads. There's several bus stops right there, like there's a big one at the corner of Eastern Street. And the resident's very upset with all the tractor trailer traffic. So I don't know if we could put signage on those streets that they can't park there. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none on favor, the eye, post say no, the eyes have it, motions carry. The next motion is nine point thirteen, also by Counselor Scott, to request city manager have the appropriate department work to have street lights installed on Adaway, seconded by Counselor Janess, Counselor Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So Adaway is part of the River, God, I can't think of the name, River's Edge, sorry about that, complex. And all of the streets were completed and they all have street lights on them except for Adaway. And I assume the reason for that is because it was supposed to be continued down the road and it was supposed to be a large project at the end. And I think they probably planned on completing it at the time, but that has not happened for quite a long time. And I witnessed personally when I was out there meeting with the resident that there's people coming in from the river in the dark down their street and they're very concerned about that and they would like to see streetlights installed. Thank you.
Any other comments? Hearing none on the face of the eye, the motion is passed. The next motion is nine point fourteen, also by Counselor Scott, to request city manager provide a report on city efforts to diversify city investments and how the administration will protect city funds in light of current banking crisis, seconded by Counselor Leahy, Counselor Scott.
Thank you. Just a quick comment on it. So I'm really just looking to inform our residents and the council how our funds are currently insured, also how they're currently collateralized. Did I get that right? Yeah, so that's what I'm looking for. Thank you.
Any other comments? That is quite amazing. That was the last motion. We don't need a Saturday meeting this week. We now go to the announcements. Any announcements? Counselor Yem.
On behalf of the entire council and the city administration, we want to wish Counselor John Leahy a happy, healthy birthday.
Is there any cake?
They couldn't make it. It couldn't fit the door because it's too big, so.
Any other announcements? I just want a quick announcement here. Early in the city hall lobby, we had the Irish Step Dancers. They were supposed to perform during St. Patrick's Week because of the uncommon weather. We postponed it to today and they showed up today. They were fantastic. I want to thank Abby Redd, Eilish Dowd, Lilac Iverson, Shay Costello. These are the fantastic Irish Step Dancers. The teacher, Mary Heavy Quinn of the school, Heavy Quinn Irish Dance. Thank you all for being here this evening. Need a motion to adjourn by Counselor Mosier, seconded by Counselor Leahy, on favor, the eye, post say no, the eyes have it, motion is passed. Thank you everyone for watching. Have a great night.